I don't know. Um, Zoom user, are you Mr. Richard Berger? No, I guess not.
He's muted.
Uh, hold on. I asked him to unmute himself if that if that is him.
I am here.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you come up as Zoom. User, so I didn't know it was you.
Okay, I don't know how to change that setting. I didn't. I put my name in previously, so I thought it would take.
That's okay. That's okay. We're being recorded, everyone. Would you like to start the meeting, Chairman Katz?
Okay, um, this is the Tuesday, November ninth, 2021 Zoom meeting of the Village of the Airmont Zoning Board of Appeals. Meeting is hereby called to order, and I guess we now have to pledge allegiance to our flag. You Suzanne, do you have the flag?
Yes, I have it up.
Great.
All right.
Allegiance to the flag, to the United States. To the Republic, which is one nation, under God.
Okay.
All right.
You want to take the call roll call the roll?
Sure, Chairman Katz.
Here.
Whoops, my pen died. Let me get a different pen. Member Cavell?
I'm here.
Member Berger?
Here.
Um, ad hoc members Semenovitz?
Here.
Ad hoc member Lukens?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Sheldon Mayer had to not be in attendance tonight, and Scott Meyer, for this application, recused himself, but he will be on for the other applications.
Yeah, should I now? I wish now to appoint the two ad haps to be full members of this meeting, at least in regard to the first application.
Yes, you need to appoint them as voting members.
Okay, so you hereby, Ms. Robin Lukens and who's the second one?
Jacob Semenovitz.
Are hereby appointed as voting members of the zoning board of appeals, at least for the first application of RWE Solar Development LLC. Okay. Okay, roll call. We did now in terms of the minutes, we just got the minutes. So if anyone needs more time, maybe we'll put off voting on a minute till our next scheduled session in December.
That's that's approved. I agree with you on that.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so now calling the first case. Suzanne, you want to read off the?
Yes.
Item on the agenda.
It's a continued application of W E Solar Development LLC for a battery storage system in the village of Airmont. The project is needed for the O and R electric grid that serves the village, which has reached capacity and no longer meets local energy demands, especially during peak times. The project will supplement the O and R transformer by releasing energy during peak demand times and recharging storing itself when the demand is low. The project will require a special permit as per Article three, section two, ten, twenty, and a variance from requirements, Article four, section two, ten, twenty eight. For underground surface or overhead utilities for developmental coverage, five percent required, forty nine percent proposed for the installation of the BES as containers, gravel pad, and access drives as set forth in section two, ten, attachment, ten, I'm sorry, in two, ten, attachment, ten, table seven of the NS zoning district bulk requirements. The property is located on the south side of Route fifty nine, approximately fifty five feet west of New County Road. The lot is designated as section fifty six point oh nine, block two and lot twenty on the town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the NS zoning district and is comprised of one point five two acres. The street address is three seventy five Route fifty nine, Airmont, New York.
Five, five, two. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant?
Yes, good evening, the village of Airmont zoning board members and everyone joining this meeting. My name is. My name is June Park, and I am with the RWE Renewables.
Were you here at the last session that you were here?
No, I didn't have the benefit of participating in the previous meeting.
I see. Do you know what went on at the previous meeting?
Yes, I have worked with our team and learned what was the discussion during the previous meetings, and we, as a team, actually put together a material that we'd like to go over to address comments and concerns and questions raised during the previous meeting.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, I shared my screen, June.
Okay, Susan, if you don't mind, can I share my screen?
Yes, I gave you I gave you permission.
Got it. Thank you. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So like I said, I'm with the RWE Renewables, and I am lead developer for the project. First of all, you know, thank you for the opportunity to address comments and the questions raised during the previous meeting. We have prepared this material that we our intention is to address the questions and the concerns raised during the meeting. So our hope is to go over this material during the next twenty minutes and open up for any questions, if that is okay with the board.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, thank you. So let me quickly introduce our team. So RWE Renewables, we are developing the project in Airmont, and we're one of the largest renewable development and operation company. Orange and Rockland is the utility and Energy Safety Response Group. They bring the fire safety expertise to the project. Stan Tech is our permitting expert, which brings the permitting, environmental permitting expertise to the project. So these are the four topics that we want to go over. The first one is just as a reminder, what zoning variance is requested? And I will hand it over to Barbara from Santa.
Thank you very much, June. Yes, to just briefly review what's being requested. The project is a battery energy storage system. Its purpose is to support the electrical grid stability in the village of Airmont. It's located, as Suzanne mentioned, at three seventy five Route fifty nine. It's zone neighborhood shopping, which is the same zoning to the east, to the right on your screen, across the street, across Route fifty nine to the north, to the top of your screen. To the left, to the west, it is professional office, and then to the south, off the edge of the rendering there, it is residential R twenty five. So the village determined that a battery energy storage system is a utility use and appropriately reviewed through the site plan and special use permit application process. This project has been reviewed by the planning board. It was reviewed to the zoning board of appeals for a single bulk variance. We're requesting the variance for a proposed development coverage of forty nine percent. And just for reference, the existing coverage, which is the former Airmont Pub, is thirty one percent. So later in the presentation, we'll address how the project meets the five considerations of the zoning court for variance requests. Right now, I'd like to turn it back to June to introduce O and R's presentation on why this project is needed in Airmont. That was one of the topics that came up at the last CBA meeting and also at a subsequent workshop that we held with local residents. And we appreciate the opportunity to explain in more detail exactly why it is that the project is located here. June, back to you.
Thank you, Barbara. So Elizabeth will talk about why this project is needed in Airmont. Elizabeth?
Yep, I'm on the call. So good evening, everyone. I have been part of all this meeting, so you probably all know me. My name is Elizabeth Fuis, and I'm a project manager for O and R, and I'm working on integrating this type of resources into the grid. I'm an engineer myself, and I spent eight years in the year before moving into this role. In O and R, we have the duty to serve you and to provide electricity to the residents at all times. Just we've got to make sure that the lights come on at all times. And starting next year, our forecast calculates that two of the circuits that run through the village of Vermont are going to be overloaded. And what that means is that their capacity, so basically the electricity that you're all consuming, yeah, sorry, their demand is going to exceed that capacity, which is the electricity that you're all consuming. And that demand is going to continue to increase every year, and there's various reasons why demand increases, but the three major ones that I have here on the slide is, so number one, we consume more power because we own more electronics than we did ten or twenty years ago. Number two, there's higher relative temperatures due to climate change, and that typically translates into hotter days during the summers, and that in turn translates into higher electric usage. And number three, which is really the big one here, is electrification. So as you've probably seen in the news, the energy sector is currently under. Did someone have a question? All right. So the the energy sector is currently undergoing a shift to electrification of number one, home heating and automotive. And all of that puts a strain in the system, and all these efforts, you know, cause a cause a higher, much higher demand in the electric infrastructure than than it was really designed for. So those two circuits that I spoke about, those are forty four, five and forty four, two, which are those the blue and the red lines that you see that you see in the graph over here, on the picture over here. Just for perspective, ninety five percent of the customers that run through the forty four dash five circuit are on the village of Vermont. And about twenty eight percent of the load coming from forty four dash two, which is the the blue one, is are also from the village of Vermont. So we're bringing this project online to ensure a few things. Number one, that the local distribution circuits, so that forty four, five and forty four, two, they stay within their operating parameters so that they don't get so that, you know, we all don't experience blackout. And number two, as a byproduct, it's going to provide substation support. So the substation equipment is also near capacity, and by alleviating the load in the circuits, I'm also helping ease potential strain of the substation equipment. And a failure in the substation equipment will also cause a failure in the power being delivered to all of the circuits that come out of the Monty Substation, including forty four, five and forty four, two. Just finally, you know, this distributed energy resources is the most effective way nowadays to meet electric demand, and along with it, it increases reliability and versatility of the local network by having available energy at all times, in case of a contingency. Any questions?
Thank you, Elizabeth. So let me move on to the next one. So we have reviewed and evaluated over forty over forty five locations as a potential project site to meet the need from the grid, as Elizabeth explained. And then, you know, I think this slide is pretty much a self explanatory, but you know, we had to meet multiple conditions to find a suitable location from a zoning standpoint, size, availability for lease standpoint, and also we have to think about the constructability in terms of construction activity access and grading standpoint. So as you can tell, we, after our meticulous site evaluation process, we have concluded that three seventy five Route fifty nine meets all the criteria and a suitable location for the project. Now, let us move into the safety topic here, and I like to have Paul.
Excuse me, Arthur. Excuse me, Mr. Park. Member Cavell here. Mr. Katz, I have a question at this juncture. May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. You say that forty to forty five other locations were reviewed for this battery storage scenario. How are we to know, is the government of the village of Airmont, to know exactly what diligence was put into that and where those other locations were in contrast to a residential zone border? Can you tell us where these other locations might have been? You don't have to tell us all forty five. We haven't been apprised of the diligence that was put forth by Orange and Rockland in their search, and all of a sudden, we're here abutting a residential zone. Can you shed some light on that, please?
Sure, sure. So we actually went through a pretty, I think, thorough process. And I can give you a few numbers here and how we screened out the site, you know, potential sites. But I think, you know, basically, a lot of sites that we looked into were not available for lease. So that was really limited potential sites that we can look into. And then the other, the other criteria was a size. So there were a few sites that were okay from a zoning standpoint and from a load serving standpoint, but we had to essentially work with multiple landowners because one particular site was big enough. So we have actually gone down pretty thorough process to, because, you know, as a developer, we wanted to have a multiple sites. If, you know, something doesn't pan out, then we wanted to move on to another site. But in this case, unfortunately, we found that the particular site that we're looking at, which is a three seventy five Route fifty nine, is, I'm not sure we can say the only location, but we didn't have luxury of looking into multiple sites to have this project built and operate in this case.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask Mr. Park an additional question on this, if I may?
Please go ahead.
Okay. So out of all those sites, okay, it's understood, some are not available for lease. There's nothing one can do about that. I get that. But were any of these sites like in nonresidential zones that you were considering?
Well, I think.
Not near homes, you know. There you go.
I think so. Thanks. Appreciate your question, and I think this is something that our permitting expert can weigh in more, but in this case, I think the zone itself for the site is a commercial zoning, which allows us to build this utility project. I think we what we are hearing is there is one side that is facing residential area, but I think from a zoning standpoint, I don't think we have something that keeps us from building this project, if I understood correctly.
Well, that's to be determined, but.
Because we had to, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but we had to find a site can that that works from, you know, there is a, if ideally, if there's a perfect site, then, you know, we would have selected the site, but unfortunately, in this case, we found that the site that we are looking at is most suitable site that among the sites that we have evaluated. I'll put it that way.
Okay.
Mr. Cavell, Mr. Cavell, this is attorney Rob Panashi. I was at the previous meeting, too.
Okay.
One other thing to point out, too, is we did submit a site selection analysis with the materials that points out what sites, you know, in a, you know, there was over, like, you said this, Mr. Cavell, that there's a site selection analysis. We looked at a multiple of sites. You know, it doesn't list every single site, but there were over a hundred and forty that were reviewed in conjunction between RWE and Orange and Rockland to find out what site would be the best suited for the needs of the customers through Orange and Rockland. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. I believe we talked about.
Yes, but we have many, many interested people attending this meeting. That are my neighbors, and I think it would be, you know, it was good to hear it again that, you know, about your efforts in looking for a site for these storage battery units. That was my reasoning and plus my reedification.
Yeah, and it's an important point, and I thank you for asking again. And the other point to make as well is, you know, this is serving to, and I know Elizabeth is going to talk about this, too. This is serving two lines. It, you know, it is a really good site for this project because we're able to provide a, you know, address a capacity concern over two lines.
What, what, let me just interrupt. What percentage, you know, it's sort of not on the exact topic I started with, but what percentage of this energy would be going towards unincorporated Ramapo outside of the boundaries of the village of Airmont? I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I can refer to to the 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 numbers that I that I talked about during my short presentation. Ninety five percent of the customers on the red circuit, so the red big circuit over there, are are serving the village of Vermont, and about twenty eight percent of the blue one are also in the village of Vermont.
Okay. Thank you for that. Chairman Katz, member Richard Burger would like to make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
When when they discussed the candidates, potential candidates for this project, and they discuss a number of, let's say, forty five, and then when it's being qualified, and really, there wasn't another suitable location that was pinpointed, to me, I mean, I liked Marty's question, but to me, I would go even one step further. I want to say in a polite way, but it seems like it's a little bit misleading. When you say there's forty five potential and none of them really qualify, and this was the best you found, the diligence that took place, I don't know if that's satisfactory, because when you discuss that this is in a residential area, you know, I don't think that many people, if they were, if it would be in their backyard, would approve something like this. So, you know, I think this is a topic that was brought up, and I think that there was a lot of, there was a lot of the consensus was that people were not too happy about the location, and in regards to the 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 request for a the that the space and the request for a variance on it, you know, being that it's in a residential area and it's short in in space, I just think it's not that good of a candidate in my eyes. So enough said.
Just, Mr. Berger, would you want to continue, please, in your presentation? Who I know who's talking in this voice, that Mr. June is talking?
June. June is. If I could, Chairman Katz, just to raise the point about Mr. Berger, I think, you know, when we were doing the site selection analysis, and I think it's, you know, I understand the concern, but I also think, you know, this project is, we're not seeking a use variance. The use is allowed in this district. We're in a district that allows this public utility. So it's not where this site is located is in a commercial district. It's, you know, the, we're not, again, we're not seeking a use variance. It's an area variance because we, you know, the zoning, the commitment, actually, the building inspector has determined that it's an allowable use. So we just, we understand the concern, and we're here to address it. That's why in the next slide, you're going to hear from Paul Rogers talking about safety. But I, I just want to repeat that, you know, we're in a, we're an allowable use here.
You're an allowable use that abuts a residential use. We understand that. And I'm interested in hearing about the safety, how safety was dealt with here, because it does abut a residential area, and you're off a major thoroughfare, Route fifty nine, of which you front on, is a major thoroughfare with one of the most important routes in the village or in the county here, maybe. And I want to see, I want to hear about the safety that you put into the system for for your location, even if your particular point, part is in a commercial use. Okay, please continue.
Yep, fair point.
Thank you. All right. So I'd like to introduce Paul Rogers, who is our fire safety expert, expert for the project, to go over this third topic about the safety.
Okay, please continue.
Hey, good evening, everyone. As you said, my name is Paul Rogers. Just a little bit about myself. I'm retired from the New York City Fire Department, where I worked on this energy storage system coming into the city.
Say again, which which fire department are you from?
From the New York City Fire Department.
New York City Fire. Are you currently employed by them?
I am not currently. I'm retired.
Ah, okay.
So I'm retired from that, and we had the same concerns that you have right now, where we were concerned about safety of the system itself, and we put together some rules. We also put together, I was also involved with putting a national standard together along with the current New York State code that is out there because of the safety factors that were in there. Actually, New York State adopted the International Fire Code early because of the safety parameters that were in there. The the code is ready to go, but it wasn't supposed to be released till twenty twenty one, but they got permission from the International Code Council to release that fire code early. So it could be used in New York State because of the the safety that was built into it. So just a little bit about the energy storage system that is going in there. As you can see, we have building blocks here. We have a cell that goes into a module, so a group of cells go into a module, a group of modules will actually go into a rack, and then a rack will go into a container or an enclosure. Each one of these things are tested individually, cell, module, rack, and the container itself. They're all tested and they're all listed. And what do I mean by listing? A listing is a is basically put out by a standard development organization. In this case, it's Underwriters Laboratory. Similar to what you, what is a listing? It's similar to what you have in your in your house. If you have a refrigerator in your house, everyone's refrigerator should be listed, and there should be a little label on the interior of the of the refrigerator itself showing that it went through a battery of test to make sure that that product was good enough to go into the house so there wouldn't be any problems with it. And the same applies here with these batteries. These batteries are all tested, and they're all listed. Anytime you have a listed product like that, you have good quality assurance that it's made, and also it reduces the risk of failure, and that's always a concern, is making sure that we can try to reduce the risk of failure to as low as possible. You can go to the next slide, please. So so in the event that there was any type of failure, there is fire protection measures that are in the system itself. There is a smoke detector and heat detector, which will look for both of those, smoke and heat. There's also an exhaust system that will pull out any gas before we have any possible problems.
Let me interrupt you at this point. You said there's an exhaust system that pulls out gases. What does it do with the gas that it pulls out?
If there was a chance of the gases building up on the interior of the of the enclosure itself, it's actually to pull those gases out to reduce any potential fire that could take place within there.
Where is it vented to?
It's vented to the. Uh, it's vented to the exterior of the enclosure.
I'm sorry, does that mean the open air or does that mean to some containment?
No, no, it would be to the open air. That's a, that's a, that's a safety feature that. Was put in by the code, national standard, also within the New York City Fire Department, make sure. That those gases do not build up on the inside.
Just jump in, Mr. Chairman, for one second, just, I, you asked. You asked a question. What gases? So can I please hear him tell us? What gases, what type of gas? On the, on the chemistry chart, what gases would be, would be accumulating that you were aware?
So, so in, in order to get that, uh, they would have to do an analysis of the actual. Smoke and that, that information is not captured during the testing that is done. The only information that is captured. Uh, is gases that are flammable that may come out of there to prevent any type of explosion from taking place.
You really can't tell us? You don't really know? You haven't done?
I don't have the data. There's no data available for that.
Analysis that even tells what gases are of concern? Not happy about that.
I can, I can tell you, I can tell you that some of the gases that were analyzed were hydrocarbons that came out. Uh, things like hydrogen.
Hydrocarbons. Hydrogen is a very explosive, uh, element, isn't it, sir?
Uh, hydrogen is, yes, and that's the reason that you have the exhaustion. Build up of, of buildup of the gases. And the exhaustion is to kick on and to keep below twenty-five percent of the LFL. As a matter of fact, I believe that they went even further and they went down to ten percent of the LFL. Make sure that there was no chance of any type of, uh, gases or explosion of fire.
What is NFL?
LFL is the lower flammable limit. So there's a range for any type of flammable gases to go on fire. There's a lower flammable limit and there's an upper flammable limit. We want to be twenty-five percent of that flammable limit, so it never reaches that flammable limit. And it doesn't get within twenty-five percent of what that LFL would be.
Let me ask you, sir, do you have a permit from the DEC, the state DEC to release fumes into the air? Department of, uh, of, uh, you know, environmental conservation?
I, I think when there's a failure in a, in, or any type of fire that could take place. I don't know if a DEP permit is, is needed in that case, but I, I don't have that answer for you, Mr. Chairman.
You, in other words, you don't have a permit to release fumes into the air? I mean, I don't know how you could do that. I mean, you're Orange and Rockland. You've got to know the rules. Uh, I don't know if you personally are Orange and Rockland, but Orange and Rockland is a very large, uh, operation. And it's been around for a while and certainly its parent, uh, um, company, uh, Con Edison has been around for a while. They must know the rules. And you're saying you don't know if you have a permit to release fumes into the air?
Mr. Chairman, I believe what Paul is trying to say is that a permit is not needed. From the, from the, uh, DEC. Because it doesn't release, you know, what, when you need a Clean Air Act permit. You need to have a, you, you need to submit certain materials to the DEC and they issue that permit. We went through the, th- this, we submitted an EAF, an environmental assessment form with the planning board. We listed all necessary permits that are needed for the project. In one, what was not listed and what is not needed is a Clean Air Act permit from the DEC.
You have an exemption from them?
There's no exemption. It's not, it's not needed. Um, you don't need, you're not exhausting. Fumes, if you will, or as Paul put it, gases on a continual basis. This is only in a very unlikely event of an issue. So i- if you don't, if you don't have an issue. And, you know, and you don't have a common and a consistent stream. You don't, you don't retain, you don't require a Clean Air Act permit. That's been, that's been decided by, uh, by the planning board. And the other boards. This, this application. Was submitted to the DEC. They, they know about this process and they came back with no permit is needed.
Uh, I just want to add to that. During normal charging and discharging of lithium ion batteries, there is no off-gassing that takes place at all. So. Again, this would only be in the event that there may have been a failure of some sort. It's only.
When I recall from last time, you're, you're, one of your presentations, I believe it was by someone called George, I don't remember his last name.
Yes.
Uh, said that one of your safety things is you don't let the gas build up, so it can't explode. And the way you avoid that. Is to vent, vent out the accumulation of gases. Now you're saying that you don't need to vent that gasation or you rarely vent the gases?
No, no, what I'm saying is during normal operations, there is no off-gassing to vent out. I'm saying in the event of a failure. Going back to what George said, they would pull the gases out so we don't have any type of explosion in there. It keeps it below the low flammable limits. Twenty-five percent of the LFL is in the code and we follow that rule to make sure that we keep the gases below twenty-five percent of the lower flammable limits.
In terms of saying in cases of failure, but the whole point of this is to avoid a failure.
That, that's correct. And that's where the listings come in. The listings actually go in there to try to make it a good quality assurance. That we have batteries that are not counterfeit batteries that may be coming in from other areas. We, we have counterfeit batteries that may be coming in from other areas. So when you have those listings itself. Um, those listings reduce the risk of any type of failure taking place.
Has DEC ruled on this, given you something in writing that says you don't need a permit? You said you applied to DEC.
No, 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 we didn't apply to DEC. When, when you submit, when you submit a, a, in an EAF, the EAF. Environmental Assessment Form with the Planning Board goes to a bunch of, what they call involved agencies. The involved agencies will tell you what permits would be needed. So, you know, if, if you're building a project. DEC, if you're building a project where there's, I mean, for example, if you're building a project where there's trees, they're going to tell you, look, you can't cut down trees without. In certain time periods or, you know, this is in a wetland, you need to, you need to, um. Make sure you're not impacting those wetlands or you need to get a wetland permit. Here, there was no requirement to get a Clean Air Act permit. Because there's not a, there's not a release of. Air pollutants on a basis unless, as Paul put it, under what Paul's scenario was. So there's no. You know, there's no permit needed for this, there's no air permit needed for this project, whether it's from DEC or from the environment, from the US. Um, Environmental Protection Agency.
You have not applied to DEC directly. Is that what you're saying? You're saying that someone else may have referred you to them and not gotten back a response?
No, but that's sort of like suggesting that, you know, you also, we didn't apply for a wetland permit either, but that's because we don't need a wetland permit. My point to you is, when you submit these things to DEC, DEC would fill in information if they thought one was necessary. You don't apply, you didn't have to apply for a Clean Air Act permit because one is not required.
But.
And, and similarly, if you look at, at, at battery energy storages around, storage projects around the state. They, they don't have Clean Air Act permits because they don't require them, because they don't emit gases in normal operation, which is what. They, they, the way they operate. There's no, there's no combustion, there's no smoke, there's no fumes, there's no off-gassing.
Right, until there is a problem, right? And then, then there are, uh, for fumes and problems. Uh, like, as you have mentioned in your materials that you just admitted this, this, uh. Uh, that, you know, it had, in Arizona, you tried to distinguish yourself from Arizona and Arizona, there was a huge explosion. Uh, and, and perhaps not in the normal course of events, but nevertheless, there was a fireball explosion there. Uh, and, um, I don't know what the requirements are in Arizona, but you're saying that, um. You don't, you, you, you don't think, or is that necessary for you to have something because it's not an everyday occurrence? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's, that's the way most projects work.
Yeah, those projects work, what, in what way?
You, you, you don't, you aren't required to have a permit for a fire that might happen at a grocery store that you're building. It's, it's. The, the permits are for normal operation.
But a grocery store does not, uh, deal with, uh, fumes that could explode, you know, and, and have exploded in other places. Uh, and, um, and you're saying that, that's irrelevant, you're saying?
No, I, what we're saying is that during normal operations, there is no off-gassing, there is nothing that takes place. Um, and that.
You can GPS from your, from your phone, right?
And that is how the, uh, the code looks at it. They look at lithium ion, does not off-guess anything during normal operation.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, George, your, your, your representative George said. That that's one of the systems that you have to prevent an explosion. So, uh, that means you have to expect. That, uh, there will be times when you have to vet gases. Uh, not, you might, you, it's one of your safety, uh, considerations. Uh, and you're saying that you don't have to apply to, uh, DEC. Uh, cause even though it might build up and it might blow up, but you're not, you're not concerned about that often enough. In other words, if it blew up every day, then you'd have to submit it. But, um, if it only blows up once in three years. And then you can get by with that. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not at all what I'm saying. What I'm saying is lithium ion batteries as a whole, the whole, I, I've, I've done numerous of these things throughout the state. And lithium ion batteries, uh, during normal operations do not off-guess anything. They do not.
Right, we're talking about abnormal, uh, uh, operations.
Well, during abnormal operations, if that would occur, what we want to do is we want to try to manage the incident. And by managing the incident, we try to prevent explosion from taking place. By preventing explosion, we're going to need to exhaust the gases out of the containers. So this way an explosion would not take place. That's a safety measure that's put in there. It's recommended. All the codes are actually addressing. That was not in the, uh, that was not part of the Arizona incident. They had no, um. Explosion control. That's why when the firefighter opened up the door. When the blast wave came, it actually hit the firefighter because that became a deflagration venting hole right there. So if they would have had fans that they could have activated, that explosion may not have ever occurred at all, but those fans were not there because it wasn't part of the code. So this is above and beyond what, uh, Arizona had. These are, these are the enhancements that were made. As a result of the Arizona incident to try to prevent any of that type of.
All right, estimation, the bottom line is, uh, you believe it was not necessary for you. Forget about the other agencies referring, but you don't believe it was necessary for you. Uh, to, uh, ask for some sort of permit from DEC for the potential release. Uh, of noxious, noxious gases. Okay.
It's not a belief, it's the law. So it's, there's a standard, Mr. Katz.
Yes.
We're, we're meeting, I'm sorry. And so we're trying to, you know, we're almost in this point of trying to prove a negative to you. And, you know, through, through every other project in the state of New York. And the, I don't, I only work in New York, Chairman, but in other states, you know, the Clean Air Act is a federal statute. So it's not a matter of just what we believe. You know, we're here to tell you that no Clean Air Act permit is required for this project.
Okay, in other words, you, what you're also saying is that DEC, because you think it's not necessary or other, other, some law. That it's not necessary for DEC to review your, um, not every day, but a case of discharges of poisonous gases. That's what you said, you know, uh, and you believe you can rely on a law to allow you to occasionally discharge. Uh, poisonous gases. Uh, and no state agency has reviewed that, uh, except for those who have referred it. Uh, to other agencies but have not done so on their own. Okay, that's how I understand what you're saying.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I, I, you, you keep trying to infer certain things on us. I mean, we're trying to, there are standards. We're trying to, and Paul is, you know, is the expert on this stuff. I'm not, I'm just a lawyer, but. You know, we're, we have standards that we have to meet and we're meeting every standard, including whether any kind of. Air permit or any other permit would be required. And, and, you know, Barbara in Stantec, they're also the. Permit experts. And so there, there's, you know, I, I don't know how else to say it, but no, no permit is required for this project. From the DEC for, you know, a potential that you're raising.
Okay, no permit, that means you don't have such a permit. Okay, it hasn't, you think it's not necessary, therefore you haven't, it hasn't been reviewed. Uh, you think it's not necessary to be reviewed under the standards of the Clean Air Act or whatever?
We're saying it's not required, not about thinking, it's just, it's not required.
Not required, okay. And therefore hasn't been done. All right, go ahead, please proceed.
Okay. So this slide, this is a, a kind of a busy slide. Uh, if you take a look, uh, up above on the. The, the row going across, that is a, the national standard, right? And above are the safety features that called out in the national standard. The one below that is the New York State code, which is, uh, matched up against the national standard. And then finally in green, you see the, the last, the third row there. That is what the BES that they're installing and how they are actually. Meeting the code and in some cases they're exceeding the, what the code actually requires. Um, both in the national and in the state code. And, um, that's one of the features that was, uh, really looked at, uh, from a safety point of view is not only are they going to meet. But they're going to go above what the code or the sta- national standard actually calls for. You can go to the next slide. Um, this goes back to the Arizona incident and yes, this was a, was an incident that took place in, in Arizona and. You're all familiar with it. I was actually called on the morning of this. I had, um, the chief of Surprise, Arizona. Who I had just done a lecture on, uh, called me, uh, at six thirty in the morning in regards to this incident that took place. But as you can see, the codes have really been developed as a result of all of this. Uh, this, this, the only thing that this thing had a permit for, from what I was told by the chief. Was for the fencing that went around it. So there was no permits actually at all for any of the installation that was put in there. They had no explosion control. They had no fire suppression indoors. They had no training for the firefighters. They didn't have any of the, uh, BMS was not functioning during the event at all. For those who don't know what a BMS is, that is the eyes and ears and the brains of the actual, uh, system itself. That would be, uh, something that would shut down on numerous occasions if it's outside of its normal operation. But all of these things were put in after the code, after the incident took place. And had really made the code more robust as a result of really looking deep into what took place and trying to prevent it. Hence, that's where we wound up having deflagration or prevent, uh, explosion control. So that would never hurt the firefighters in the event that they were coming up to an incident like that. And we've even looked at firefighting operations and how they would actually handle it. In New York City, they have standard operating procedures on that would develop. And, uh, they were kind of prepared for a potential explosion, but, um, there was one that took place here in Arizona. Uh, thank God we haven't seen one in, uh, in the New York area and hopefully we'll never see one. As a result of what the codes actually have in place to prevent any type of explosion from taking place. So those codes and standards are in there really just to make sure that we have safety and they're robust and, uh, they are. Constantly being looked at to make sure that we're getting the right information to keep. Uh, both the people in the area and also the responders make sure that they're safe, uh, in the event that there was. Any type of failure taken place within the actual energy storage system. You can go to the next slide. Thanks, Jim. So this is just kind of showing.
I mean, you said, interrupt you one more time. You say there are procedures and training for the first responders, which of course is very important. Uh, but what about for the people who live nearby? Is there any. Uh, warning system or any other type of, uh, procedures or something to help protect? The people who live nearby. Uh, I believe the number was a hundred and forty feet away. Uh, I know that, uh, when the. Um, there's electric, now that, uh, nuclear plant, there are sirens that are tested and lights and. And, and warning systems for the people too. I mean, obviously you have to protect the first responders and that's obviously a important thing. Uh, but you have to also protect the surrounding people and I haven't heard anything from you yet about that.
Sure, sure, yeah. And, and that's a great question. And, and, um, there will be audio and, uh, visual. Uh, horns and bells and whistles that call the alarm system that would be ringing in the event of any type of gases. Uh, those should be well in advance before any type of failure taken place or any noticeable failure taken place. Uh, the fire department also will be trained in the event that there was, uh. Uh, something that they needed to do and that would be up for the incident commander, whether they think that they need to do any other, other, um. Operations in regards to people who may be, uh, in the area or may be concerned. About any type of stuff within the area. And it's up to their public relations people to keep, uh. Uh, the people and the news media involved and up to date on what's going on. It's part of the incident command structure that is set up at every incident.
What type of evacuation procedures you have for the surrounding, uh, civilians?
What, uh, I don't think that the, by code, we're not required to do an evacuation procedure for the actual people in the area.
You have not. So in other words, if that required, you won't do it. You have not. So in other words, if that required, you won't do it and you're not doing it and you don't have any. Something could happen and the people who are sleeping a hundred and forty feet away won't know about it till uh, till God knows what happens. I understand you're not required, does mean you can't.
I.
Maybe that's one of the problems here. You're only doing what's required and that what's best for the people surrounding.
Well, I, I guess we can, we can look into possibly seeing if there is something that can be put in there or maybe doing an education for the, for the people themselves. And we can talk about how the alarm systems and uh in the event that.
But at this point, nothing exists. You could look into it. You might come up with something, you might not. Uh you might forget about it, but right now at this point that you're making this presentation, nothing exists for the surrounding people.
No, no, uh at, at this point, no, except for we did have a community meeting where we did meet. Uh people that were concerned in the area to try to explain some of them and. There was a question and answer period at that particular time, just to try to uh go.
What came out of that question and answer period? Did anything come out of it?
Well, they, they did want to know uh about the safety of it and they were, they were concerned about it and.
And how did you answer that?
Well, we told them that we went through what we're going through now. This was, this, this particular. Uh presentation that you see was actually given to the people that were out there, maybe.
But you haven't said anything about uh safety. You're saying things that you might do, but you haven't done anything. And you have apparently no plans to do anything. All in what's required by law for the protection of the first responders, which of course is very important. You have to protect the first responders. But you have to also protect the survivor, the surrounding people and I haven't heard anything about that other than maybe. Maybe we'll think of it.
It's our main cats.
Yes. Who wants to speak?
Uh this is Andrea Hu Bianco from R W E. I lead the engineering team for energy storage. And by coincidence, I'm also a nuclear engineer, so I probably can fit in a little bit here if you, if you allow me to.
Yeah, you can say what you want. Your presentation.
Yes. Yeah, I mean by uh and I respect your, your example on nuclear, but when, when we say uh we, we. Uh comply with codes and standards. So these codes and standards are written by experts and they, they last years. Before they're being developed. So the considerations about safety of the people are implicit within the standards. So it's not that standards and in fact, nuclear power plants are very dangerous. The explosion that can result or uh. The uh emission that can result from a nuclear power plant can go for kilometers. Outside the plant and of course, then you have to have measures in terms of evacuation. In terms of battery energy storage system, the impact that can be in the surrounding is different. Is it is considered in the standard? That's why in the standard there are uh measures against the ventilation and uh of the closure. Uh but there are no uh exactly same measure to be taken with the surrounding. Uh because the impact that even an event like the one that we are describing, an abnormal event which low frequency, but still can happen. Does not have this substantially impact that a nuclear power plant has. So when we say that we are there to decode. The code have been developed in thinking, of course, with a lot of experts thinking of the saf- the safety and implication on the surrounding. So usually anything that is in the code protects also the surrounding. So that's just to make it very clear. It's not a way for us. To say we are, we are obliged to decode and we don't want to hear anything else. Usually the code had been longly studied before being developed. To account for that.
Okay, I, can I just jump in, Mr. Chairman? I appreciate these gentlemen saying that. But if he's saying that those, uh those codes are written by experts who have to consider the circumstances, they've done a terrible job. Cause if there's no standard by which to protect a community within a hundred and forty feet of a project. Those standards speak for themselves. They're inadequate and therefore it doesn't really meet our concerns. Sorry.
I, I, I think it's important though, um i- i- that, you know, neither Scott or I are experts in this field because we're the attorneys. You know, you have had an expert that was retained by the village to review this project. And the expert has provided its blessing for this project. So to say that the standards are not sufficient, it's just, it's, it's, it's quite frankly, Scott, almost an arbitrary statement by you that is.
Uh so I don't agree. Let me tell you why, let me tell you why I don't agree. If the expert failed. To a, to address certain issues, then that report is inadequate. Just because the village ob- obtained it and as we're having the hearing, we're learning more information. I'm not bound by what that report says. If it's inadequate, the codes are inadequate, the report from the village is inadequate. It doesn't address the concerns and safety of, of our, of our residents. I'm sorry, that's our number one concern, our number one concern. Number one concern.
Okay, so then so has Scott. I mean, you, you are saying things that are inconsistent with Spark. Inconsistent with the fire department. So you're essentially saying that you happen to know more than both. An expert in the field and also the fire department who has given its blessing for this project.
I've. What I'm saying, no, 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 hang on. He's, he's addressing that. Give me. No, my job as a lawyer is to be able to have a hearing and by. The discussions amongst the parties is to figure out if there's any inadequacy. So when you're putting words in my mouth and I really don't appreciate that. And quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, you're doing the same thing. You're asking the same questions I'm asking and you're deriving the same information. I'm not. An expert in anything except obtaining information and using my own pragmatic brain. To figure out that there might be some things that were not addressed. And if you can't see that, counselor, I'm sorry.
Well, look, I'm sorry you say that, but there is, you have to remember, there is a standard. That needs to be followed by the zoning board when you're reviewing a project for an area variance. And we're just suggesting that we're trying to go above and beyond and meet that standard. You know, in, in to keep, we're, we're going to continue to answer questions that Chairman wants and we think we're doing that. But I just want to make it clear that we're meeting the legal standards here for both a standard area variance. And also what would be required for a public utility. That, that's the only point we're trying to make. Um and I just want Paul to continue, but I, I do think. You know, you're looking at some of the information we've provided. We have worked. Very, very hard with the, with the folks in the community, with the fire district. With Spark to make sure all these issues are addressed. I frankly. Would tell you with a hundred percent certainty, Mr., you know, Mr. Chairman, that I don't understand it because I'm not an expert.
Okay, that doesn't help us. You're not understanding something. Uh no, as a great attorney you are, does not help us. Bring us closer to where we have to get. Okay, uh please continue with your presentation.
Sure, um so I, there was, there was one point I, I, I do want to bring out and I guess I can do it here, but we did, we did speak with the. Uh the fire department because they had their concerns, making sure that they could manage the fire. After many discussions, we uh. We had them, uh that they felt safe enough that they could be able to manage the fire. Um and then, you know, we even did some of the things that are not in a normal energy storage system. And that is they, they put sprinklers directly into the uh enclosure itself. There'll be a fire department connection on the exterior of the gate where the fire department will hook into a hydrant, which will be placed at the gate that. R W E were putting that hydrant in there. So the water will be readily, readily available. They'll hook into that hydrant. They'll push the uh water into the engine. The engine will push the water out another hose right into the fire department connection. And directly into the actual enclosure itself, which they can flood the enclosure for quick and easy and. Non-invasive and defensive operation extinguishment. And I, and I think that that is uh something that we're probably going to see the standard uh start to move toward. If they can, because they're looking at that right now as they look at a revision of N F P A fifty five, which is the. National standard. I'm possibly looking at maybe getting water directly on the interior of the enclosure. Which R W E is actually doing uh for this particular project. So I, I personally. Think that that's uh a good thing for not only the fire service, but also to get water directly into the, into a potential fire that's in there. And also to get any type of smoke or extinguishment uh suppressed almost uh. Uh once the water actually gets into the enclosure itself. You can go to the next slide, please. Thanks. Oh, this, uh yeah, so this is just something uh that was a, a company, uh an engineering company, Spark. Who are fire protection engineers. Uh they are, uh they were hired. By the town in order to review the uh, the installation. Uh to make sure that the uh installation was meeting the required standards and codes. Uh from New York State that were adopted by the Department of State for Energy Storage System. And uh as you can see highlighted in green, they didn't have any objection. Uh to authorize the project approval being requested. So there was really no objection on, on their part. Of this installation uh moving forward.
Yes, let me interrupt you again. Though at the last hearing on this, uh it was pointed out to uh. Uh you weren't here, but to the rest of your team that Spark had a lot of uh empty spaces on that report. Uh where they said that they don't know the answer to it or the information hasn't been provided for that. Uh and then your team answered, well, they can't provide the information until it goes further, the project goes further. So uh, so basically that report is not telling us anything at this point. So I'm not sure what type of support you want to get out of that Spark report when it's incomplete. Uh admitted incomplete and you said it was incomplete in your last presentation.
I, I think uh as the, the development continues to move on, uh more and more information will uh be supplied uh to make sure.
Have they issued an updated report? Have they issued more information in the report or is still the original one that we had before?
I believe that you have the original one, Mr. Chairman.
With no updates to it. Okay.
Yes, I believe that's the case.
All right, please continue.
But no, Paul, 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 that's not correct. They came back and you spoke to them and they said that the. The everything that wasn't submitted would be built, they're building permit, permit conditions and not planning board. Concerns. So that's the, the, the only open matters are those that would be. Of the design nature and building code issues, same kind of concept of when you're building a uh. Um any kind of gas station or any other facility where you get your site plan, special use permit. And then you submit documentation that's going to be reviewed.
That, that, that is correct. And I believe uh Spark may be on the call. Um if there were any questions in regards to.
Yes, but you're asked to give you permission now based on, uh based on incompleteness. Maybe later on. Uh when the, if the project goes further, they'll have more information, but you're asking us to decide now. Not, not on what some future information might become available. All right, I'm sorry. Please continue.
Okay. Uh you can go to the next slide, please.
One sec, you mentioned that Spark was on the call. Do they have something to contribute here?
Hey, this is Steve from Spark Fire Protection. Um nothing additional, uh no, no corrections to anything that Paul or um. Um I forget the gentleman's name, Mr. Mr. Panachi is uh mentioned so far in, in summarizing our report. So unless there's any other questions for me specifically, we don't have any other comments.
No comments. Okay, please continue. Mr. Paul, you were talking.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Uh so, so this is really just kind of going over. I had mentioned, uh I, I can't have my cursor there, but. As you can see, uh we, we will have access for the, the, the fire vehicles in that particular area there. The water will be readily available in that particular area. We have the fence around there for no intrusion and also that fence is there to make sure that we keep the fire service out. We really want a defensive operation. That is the reason that we put the uh fire department connections on the exterior of the fence. To try to prevent them from actually going in, inside when there's a dangerous, when there's a potential dangerous situation going on. Um and that's, that's pretty much around all energy installations, energy storage installations. Uh throughout the nation that they really would like to keep the fire service out of these places. Uh that are no staffing there on a full-time basis. But uh also uh it will help with their defensive operations. So you can go to the next slide.
Paul, I can take it from here. Thank you. This is Dwight Herringer. I'm with Stan Tech. Uh and. I was at the first meeting. I wish I was there in person. I wish we were still doing in-person meetings. Because I, I actually like them a lot more than the Zoom meetings. Anyway, there are considerations that is, the zoning board has when they review an application for a variance. And we thought it would be helpful to outline about five, the five main considerations are actually called considerations. For this project. Does the facility change the character of the neighborhood? We would suggest, uh no, uh here's some tangible. Things that are going to be better with this project than now. Reduce traffic. There'll be. Very minimal visitors to the site, which would be maintenance on the order of one pickup truck per month. It'll be a much quieter use and I'm sure as neighbors, you, you know how loud that use could be there. With the existing zoning and, and current use. The. The units are lower than the two-story structures that are there and they're going, there is going to be a new landscape buffer. With a hundred new plantings and a new eight-foot fence around the entire. Uh project. The, the more attractive looking fence is the wood board on board that will be. On the side of the residence. The other fence is on purpose. Uh chain length so that the firemen can see in and as Paul mentioned, not, not feel obligated to try to get in to understand things better. What can the benefit be accomplished by some other method? No, uh the batteries need to be placed where the energy load is. Otherwise, the, the power lines between there and the substation would need to be increased. And this is the, the goal is to get the need where the energy load is and will be. And as Elizabeth mentioned, this location is very unique. It serves two separate Orange and Rockland electrical circuits. Is the requested area variance substantial? Now that's a zoning and planning term with the term substantial. We would also su- suggest no. The half of the site will actually remain undeveloped. And it'll be enhanced by a removal of most of the existing pavement. Those of you that are really interested in the project, if you, if you have visited the site as it is, you see this very immense parking lot. That will be about eighty percent removed and the only parts kept just mandatory spots. For a fire truck to sit outside the fence and the proposed additional landscaping. That will make an improvement. Number four, what, what is the effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? Well, one thing about a big parking lot is that it runs off, the water, rainwater runs off very quickly. And that's what it's doing now. The crushed stone yard will allow for much greater infiltration of stormwater. Plus the same landscape buffer will actually look really nice. Um what, what's the need for a variance self-created? That's always a topic for every um variance request. And in this case, no, and it, the answer is. Related, this is the proper utilities zoning as recommended by the village. And it was only, it was based on narrow transmission line corridors because in the old days, the old thought was. Just get a big generator of electricity or transmission facility and then send it down large power lines. And, and it'll, they would only take a small amount of space. So all we're asking tonight is that. The, there are requests for that one variance be considered and, and to allow the. Project then to advance to planning board where any other issues that people have could be discussed even further. Uh next slide. June, I'd be glad to summarize here or unless you would like to.
No, go ahead, Dwight.
Okay, so what are the benefits from this project? Okay, we, we were asked about that where there was some concern over who's getting what benefit. Some of the major ones, we really can't forget and with all the worries and things that people are thinking about a lot. The benefit to the neighbors, it's going to be much quieter, much quieter. There's no trash pickup at odd hours, I assume. That might have happened. Uh reduce pavement and enhance landscaping. The benefit to the community, there is no way to ignore. The improvement to the electricity and, and the grid reliability for the local users. It's getting more and more important. Elizabeth was as clear as she could be at this part about it, but it's, it's not. It's out of towners that are going to benefit. It's you primarily according to those percentages that Elizabeth had on her, on her chart there. It bolsters the use of renewable power. Okay, so we're all in this mode of thinking about. Getting through COVID, number one. Number two is thinking about the environment and so on and, and what would make it better. This type of technology is what will make the grid more reliable because it can use some of the intermittent power. And the fourth one, improving the grid efficiency, allowing this batteries in general. That's why the state has. Great goals with this for all of our benefit is that it will then have less use of the peak power plants. The ones that are more, most pollution emitting. So all in total, we really, we would offer that this project is a benefit both locally. So all in total, we really, we would offer that this project is a benefit both locally and regionally. And we would request this variance be considered. June, would you like to follow on that or take questions? You're muted still, June.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. I think this is the material that we prepared. And I'd like to open up any additional questions and comments.
All right, we have already closed the public hearing. But if any member of the board wants to reopen the public hearing in light of the new information that's come or the new presentation that's been made tonight, I'd be willing to grant the reopening on motion and seconding of reopening the public hearing. Does anyone on the board want to reopen?
Marty, you're muted.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, Marty Cavell here. I'd like to make a motion to reopen the hearing to the public.
Can I ask a question first?
Okay.
Okay. I'm not sure. I'm not sure who I'm addressing this to, but it's whoever is representing.
One second, but who are you first? Make sure everyone.
I'm sorry, this is Robin Lukens. I'm an ad hoc, but tonight I'm a regular member, I guess, a voting member of the zoning board. I have a question. Maybe it's for Dwight. I'm not sure. This is going to sound very like unscientific, but I'll still ask it. I happen to be a real estate agent. And whenever houses have high-power lines nearby, like in their backyard or their neighbor's backyard, there's a perception that it's dangerous, it's scary, whatever. Some people don't want to buy those houses. Some people don't want to live near them. I guess my question is, how does this compare to something like that in terms of safety or perception of safety or?
How does it compare? Let me start, and I'm sure there are others on the team that can build on it and elaborate it. Because I believe they have done some studies about that. And you know how there is always, remember when cell towers first came out, there was a great uproar over, oh, my God, that cell tower is going to be, I'm going to see it in the morning, and it looks like an ugly thing. And now we get disappointed if we don't have proper cell service, you know? Right? I mean, so this, I personally feel that this has the potential of initially causing, because of its newness, but then it'll be like the quiet hero that becomes, oh, wow, yeah, we have good power in our community. And we haven't had these problems. And it's a very quiet neighbor. And you might not have had the benefit of some of the visualizations, Barb, that maybe it might make sense to show like the view from the neighbors and so on. Though, by the way, they'll be provided where, that it works out that way. The full format to discuss all of these and show these will be the planning board. And there'll be all the folks that are on the line, that whether they talk tonight or not, we will be able to see that. I believe that this neighbor will be ultimately seen as not one that is problematic, but it'll actually be a quiet benefit for the area. June, do you want to talk about any studies?
And I don't think, yeah, I'm saying it's not, let's say somebody doesn't live in the area and they're looking at a house, at a property that abuts it. You know, they're not going to look at what the benefits are. They're just looking from a very scared point of view. You know, and that's what I'm asking really, not the overall benefits, you know, et cetera. I'm really looking, asking you in terms of safety.
Safety. Well, before I wanted to mention this while the safety discussion was going on. If there are some notifications and things that the neighbors would like to incorporate into the formal process that'll evolve even further with the fire department of their protocol when they arrive and who gets talked to when. I'm sure that every partner in this project would be glad to incorporate whatever the neighbors want. If they want to get notified early, just to know, however. But remember, when you look at it from someone right there, remember there is 100 feet of untouched land that is quite immense when you're there. I think it'll be, I think it'll be an impact that is beneficial. I guess if there was a study or something about proximity to any power project, I think that it's, it is, you know, no one can say for sure. But the question that I actually took on when I was there in person was someone said, would you live next to it? I mean, maybe, Robin, that's a way I could answer this best. And my answer was actually a genuine yes. When I visited the site, I saw what it is used now. And I'm not saying it was a bad use, but I certainly could consider it a possibly allowed use. And the dumpsters that are about 40 feet away. And then I'm not just an over advocate for energy strength for the US. I'm thinking that if I lived there, I would feel like this is a quiet, controlled neighbor that I can count on. And I would say to the fire department, okay, I want to be, I want to know what's going on in this manner. And so I can get used to it because it's new. But I said then, and I'll repeat again, that I would not mind living next to a facility just like this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you'll humor me to open or reopen the public hearing.
Right. You making such a motion?
That's my motion. I need a second.
All right, who seconds that motion?
I seconded.
Second the motion.
Who did that? Was that Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Robin Lukin seconded that motion. Okay. Vote on the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Hearing is reopened. Anyone from the public have any comments on the new information that they made tonight?
If you have, please raise your hand and then give your name, please.
I'm sorry, I don't think I'm on video.
I see something from Ms. Meham.
Yes, Danielle Mehan.
Hello, everybody. Can I direct, or I have a question, Chairman Katz, to the team that's presenting the facility? Okay, have any of your facilities ever had an accident in them?
Yes.
This is Andrea Bianco from WWE. Any facility, you mean the battery facility, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. The answer is no.
No, okay.
One second, one second.
Wait a second. That's not Arizona.
That's not their facility.
You say us, our facility, right? Or I misunderstood the question. We are not, yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Our facility are absolutely not, absolutely not.
Yes, there's more than one company that owns these, and I know. Okay, all right. So this past summer in Illinois, I know there was an accident with a fire, which was not your facility.
Correct.
Is that, I don't know if you are aware of what kind of facility that was, but does your proposed facility differ from that facility? My concern was about 3,000 people had to be evacuated due to the fear of fumes.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, when there are these news, Ms. Mehan, so it's not that we get more information than you get, right? So we also have to rely on the public news. Then sometimes like the Arizona accident, there are more information about the facility and then we learn a little bit more. But we know basically the same information that you have. I mean, it was a lithium ion battery facility, but we don't know why the battery took place, but why there was really more of a fire took place and what were the consequences and the difference with our system. It usually requires a bit of an investigation like it happened in Arizona, when then those material about the design becomes public. And then we usually then have a look and learn anything from it. But from this specific case, there has not been an investigation. We are not have access to any information more than you can find in Google, basically.
Okay, thank you. Sure, I appreciate that. In the unlikely event of a fire, just this area has at least 10,000 to 15,000 cars passing by it every day. It's one of the busiest intersections in the county. What would the potential effect be to the road structurally? I assume it would have to be shut down, correct? Because it's pretty close, fairly close to the road. Is that correct? Route 59, which, and I know there's neighborhoods behind it, but not that these people aren't important, they're important. But this one question is focusing on the traffic.
You know, I wonder if we could throw in a couple of thoughts on that. If you're, can you see, Danielle, can you see the screen right now?
Yeah, I sure can. Thank you.
Okay, so you see the U-shaped gray area. That's the residual of the old parking lot. Plus, there was about 50 more feet that got sawed off. But you can see that that's a lot of space for fire trucks to stage while they decide what the next step is until the event then winds down and, you know, that unit is turned off and it becomes nothing. So I would not say that it is immediately true that you would have to shut down that road. Because there's quite a lot of space here. Perhaps if you were to consider something like in New York City, if you had a building fire, you know, you're going to close the road probably. Paul would know 100% better than me. But here, there's a lot of room there that fire trucks could stage and stay there. Maybe they do something to the road, but it is not a mandatory that every event shuts down the road. And like, and I'm talking about events like they're going to happen all, you know, that seems to be the tone. They're very infrequent.
No, I know. I'm aware. But I'm one of those people who thinks about hoping for the best and prepare for the worst kind of thing. So this would be a major, huge issue to the county, not just this area.
Yeah. Miss Mehan, if I can add probably something about it. So in general, so in all the accidents that happen, that we, sometimes we also discuss some of them, right? So what will happen is only one enclosure, right? So it's very, very, very likely, actually, until now, every time there, if something had happened, it happened at the enclosure level, right? So you see here in green, a different enclosure. So when you have to think about this possible fire, it's not that this entire site takes fire, right? So just to make it very clear. So in the situation that happened in the past is limited to one of these green boxes that you see, the larger one, right? So we don't have to think about a catastrophic fire that involves entire site. We are just talking about something that can happen within a battery located in one enclosure.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So this design is different from some of these other past facilities that had fires? Those were.
Well, I mean, it's always, you have to think, you have to think about, so you see these green boxes, the one that are a bit larger one, right? So for instance, you see these horizontal, oh, exactly. Thank you very much for everything. So inside this enclosure, there are different, there are batteries inside. So in general, if an event happened, it happened, it's not like it will happen to all the different containers. It will happen in a few batteries located inside one enclosure. So the event will be limited only to, if it happens, to one of those. And usually, just a few batteries within that, this green box. So you don't have to imagine this with the entire systematic failure going around, just to make it very clear.
Okay, so if the worst happened, it would be just confined to one? One, okay.
In fact, in these codes, in these codes that we are discussing about, so one of the requirements of the codes is to avoid the propagation of the fire from one enclosure to the other one. And that's all things that we comply with.
I see.
Okay.
And just to add to that, Ms. Mehan, the idea of having the sprinkler directly inside one of those boxes that was just referred to, that would be, with the attempt to quickly extinguish that, and I'm not sure if you understand, I was trying to explain it, how the fire department would pull the water from the hydrant, pump it through their pumper, and then into a dry pipe that would lead right to the sprinkler system for that particular container. And then you would have water in there the moment that the fire department hooks into the hydrant and pumps it through their apparatus.
And that's too cool, cool, because the water causes the batteries to explode. Am I right about that? That would be more.
No, no, and that's, and yeah, a lot of people are thinking that. You're thinking of lithium metal batteries where they are not, they do not play well with water, lithium metal. This is a lithium ion battery assault, and a water is the preferred extinguishing agent for lithium ion batteries.
Okay, okay, thank you. I live on the other side of Armont. But I would tell you, if I lived close to this facility, I think I would feel better. Perhaps I'm speaking for a lot of people. I'm not sure. If some plans for, again, you hope for the best, plan for the worst. If, God forbid, they did have to evacuate, maybe think about or assisting the village in working on plans like that. Because that's a kind of a pretty scary thing to think about. I'm just sharing my thoughts about that. But again, thank you, everyone, for the clarification and the information. I appreciate it.
Can you speak and, have you any other questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Katz.
I want to follow up on something she said, something Ms. Meham said. To the, one of your presenters here is a retired New York City fireman. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be me, Paul Rogers.
Okay. If you were fighting a fire here, would you want to close down Route 59? Or you let your trucks go wherever you can squeeze them in?
No, well, one of the things is, yeah, you know, being in tight quarters in New York City, that was something that was always looked at is, you know, traffic patterns is very big with the New York City Police Department trying to move traffic. So the one thing that we do understand is trying to move traffic. There's times when we just have to take up the whole street in order to put up an area ladder or something like that. And there's nothing we can do about it. But when there is control of the fire or when we can move the apparatus to the side of the road, that will be done as soon as practical to try to get that flow of traffic. But most firefighters are cognizant of the buildup of traffic. And, you know, once they have the scene stabilized, then yes, they would definitely.
So in other words, you have no problem with traffic passing, and Route 59 in this area is a major surfer, major surfer. And you would have no problem with traffic proceeding regularly in the event that you were fighting a fire in this location? Yeah. No problem with the traffic going back and forth?
As long as the scene is stabilized, you're going to have to open up traffic.
Yeah, but what, before, how long will it take for the.
That's a hypothetical. It all depends on when the incident commander deems it's safe and the.
So there will be times when it's not yet stabilized, and incident commander would rather err on safety and close down Route 59. Is that what you're saying?
That's a judgment call.
Well, and that could be yes, okay. It's hard to get a direct answer from your people, but I think you're saying yes.
Chairman Katz, this is again Andrea, probably if I can feed in here. So I also want to make everybody aware that, I mean, the batteries that are used here are very similar or basically identical to all the electric vehicle cars that everybody will have in the city very soon. So the situation also in terms of perception of risks. So here we are talking about a very safe system with many, again, as we describe, above standards protection compared to a situation of a parking lot with many Tesla or any other EBA manufacturer, where there may be a battery that catch fires of a Tesla, and they will just let the battery, let's say, the battery extinguish the fire. And there are less concern thinking about that. But I want to make you every aware, the perception of the risk in comparing the situation is also like something that in general, in the future, everybody will get more used to it. And we will also have, it already happened that there is a Tesla on fire, they let it burn and the traffic continues then around.
I see. I believe you're aware, though, that General Motors also makes an electric car.
Yeah, exactly. I didn't want to make a Tesla advertisement. I was just using it since being one of the most prominent.
But the General Motors has advised that you not park its electric cars indoors because they can erupt in a fire. And you're saying this is similar to that?
In fact, I'm saying we have a lot of precautions compared to a situation of an electric car where there is basically no precaution. That's why we can put it indoor and we can put it in building or we can put it like in this case in enclosure. The difference on the garage is that in the garage, there are no safety measures. That's why.
All right. Is there anyone else in the public?
Yes, yes. Etsy's been waiting, and then there's another person that would like to speak that's on the phone.
Okay.
Go ahead, Etsy.
Hi, I'm a property owner. My property abuts this project. I wanted to say that I thank the company for reaching out to us and having that meeting. It was informative. However, with the new. However, with the new materials they sent over, I did have a few more concerns. I talked to, to inform that June Park is only on the project since September, October. He was not involved in the process of selecting properties. I mean, I myself can offer a property that's about a tenth to two-tenths of a mile down after the new office building before the Planet Fitness area. It's literally a couple of feet down Route fifty-nine. And it's, so again, a wooded area. It will not be, as far as I can tell, abutting private houses. I'm just wondering why, like they said in the beginning, out of forty-four properties, they had to choose something that is literally in the backyard of three property owners, as well as near very populated office buildings. Another thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that the zoning procedures for these kind of projects were written in twenty-twenty. I had literature that was published at the time, directly instructing towns and villages how to go about getting these kind of projects up. And there was, I have a screenshot of it, but I can't access it right now. But there was three hundred million dollars, upward of three hundred million dollars in grants being offered to areas and villages that are willing to put these kind of structures in their land in order to meet certain energy standards as set by some kind of energy czar in New York State. And I wanted to also point out, this is not green energy, this is traditional energy, as reiterated by the companies themselves. It's just a storage, which I guess hopefully one day they would like to be able to store solar power in these kind of batteries. But right now, there is absolutely no green impact to the environment, as far as I can tell. And another thing which I'm infuriated is that I was not notified of this meeting. Last time we left, so November ninth was a tentative date. It was actually set for, I think, November eleventh. A lot of my neighbors couldn't make it tonight. They had other kind of things, and I told them, don't worry about it. I'm sure they'll let us know formally with a letter that's taking place, and I was not notified. So I don't know what's going on, but it seems a little sleazy and a little backhanded the way this project is being approved by all the security and all the permit people without letting literally a backyard neighbor where, yes, my house is a hundred and ten feet away, my backyard, from a little, like an energy plant. Another thing I wanted to say is that these, the codes were developed after a lot of these incidents, which is a very widespread theme with safety codes, codes in the United States in general. It's usually an after something happens, they develop these things. That's why I say let this project run somewhere else for twenty years and then come back here when you have twenty years of data on emissions, on safety, and all that kind of stuff, and then let us know if it's safe. And, yeah, and I, I, I was, I was, after the meeting, initially a little more comfortable with it. But after discussing it, and I, I shared the literature with my neighbors, and we just, we can, we cannot give our blessings. Again, it's up to the zoning board to do what they have to do. But I feel like, yes, it's not in, they're not in the interest of the community. They're in the interest of O N R, which is a big company with extensive reach into the village. And I feel like we're being blindsided a bit by it, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Just let you know that we have complied with all of those requirements that we were required to do. And if you have any further questions, that's, you can ask Ms. Carly. But, but everything has been complied. It doesn't just try to push back, push around anyone who's concerned about. The eleventh was the original day, a holiday, so, and the village offices will close on Veterans Day. So we had to find it also today. Okay, anyone else have something that they want to share with us?
Arthur, it's Suzanne. I just wanted to point out, at the meeting, we discussed as part of new business so that we could pick a new date. We picked the ninth because the village was closed, and it was stated at the meeting that there would be no further notice other than it being posted on the website and an email blast. And we did know that there were not neighbors at that, some of the neighbors were not at the meeting due to a holiday, and it was going to be conveyed, but it was posted on the website and an email blast to go out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carly. Anyone else have something to contribute? Any other member of the public have something?
Yes, there, Ralph would like to speak. I'm trying to find him. Hold on.
Ralphie, Mr. Bracco?
I believe so. Ralph, I'm, I'm trying to unmute you. You have to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi, Ralph?
Yeah.
Hi, okay, good.
All right, hi, Ralph Bracco, Derni New County Road, Armont. I was at the meeting the last time, and I was against this project. And I'm very strong on not having this project in the Village of Armont for a lot of reasons. First of all, I met with the fire department a while ago at, at the meeting, and apparently there's been some kind of disagreement on what they said and what these applications are saying. They were really not in favor of it, but they were in favor of working together for the safety of the community and meeting with you and doing certain things. So I don't believe what you're saying, that the fire department torment is a hundred percent in favor of it. I spoke to them. I went to a meeting with the members as well, and I've been very clear about this. They've been having a lot of problems, I understand, talking to the village board, and then the communication of this whole project. Let me start with that. So I'm not in favor of this, and I said that at the last meeting, it should not be there. As far as I saw this building, that place was a pancake house. It was always successful in the village. I'm here fifty years, and I know what I'm talking about. The project is too close to the residents. You know it, we know it. And as far as the, the, the street being blocked when it's an emergency, they will close the street off the fire department. There's no doubt in my mind. I've been in this county a long time. I have a restaurant in the county for many years, and I know what I'm talking about. Let me just go a little further. You said that you had other places that you looked at. I believe on Carlton Road, you had an application going there, and the town of Ramapo refused you. Why? I don't know. On Foshe Road, you've had an application over there, and again, the town of Ramapo refuses as well. We have a, a project which I showed the board at the last meeting over in Pomona, which is in the town of Ramapo, which, if you look at the site, it's nothing what you have in front of you tonight. There's no strawberries. It's just, it's all like batteries, and not batteries, but like all these units standing out in stainless steel with fences around it, and it's, and it's submerged away from the neighborhood off of that road. I think it's Dill Road in Pomona, I guess it's called. So my, my, my question very, very strongly, we don't really need that. We don't have high densities in this village. We don't have a lot of need for extra electricity. I know, and I know for many years, that we supposed to be working for everybody. And O N R, as I said before, is a good neighbor of the Village of Armont, and always been good. However, the project that you're putting in front of us is too big, too ugly, and it's not going to work. And I'll be honest with you, even if it goes through, they will be against it caught. That's not going to happen, because to tell you the truth, this project, you know from the last meeting that this should have been rejected then, because we just dragged it on a little longer. People in the community want to live together, want to be safe, and we want to help one another and make it work. The fact of the matter is, the property there is too small. It's right off of fifty-nine, as people said, east and west. It's a very bad location. I'm hoping that some way in the government, which I'm trying to deal with a legislation assembly, that they make laws. You have to put it on a minimum of three to four acres, like other projects we have in the village. I believe, not to take it away from O N R or the people, it's not necessary. I think the board should reject it a hundred percent. I think it's not a good idea, and I think it's dangerous. And I believe in my heart that this thing will start a very negative effect on the residents in Armont. I hope the board listens, understands. I don't want to say that these things are not necessary, but in my opinion, O N R on fifty-nine has a big piece of property down there. Put it down there. It's only half a mile away from this project on fifty-nine, if you want it on the main road. I think you should look a little deeper into that, and please do not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bracco. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any, I'm just looking. I don't see any other hands raised. If anybody else would like to say anything, please raise your hand. I don't see any others, Chairman.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing again? Marty, are you here?
I'm here. I've always been here.
Okay.
I was fixing my hair. All right. I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a second on that?
Second.
Who said that?
Jacob.
Jacob.
Thank you.
Okay. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You want against? No?
No, okay, unanimous. All right, the public hearing is closed again. All right, ready discussion amongst the members of the board on the motion that we have here, of, of the application that we have here? Does anyone want to submit, anyone on the board want to submit a motion concerning the application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Marty Cabell. Want to make a motion to decline the application.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, okay. All right, we have a motion now to deny the application of the applicant. And I guess as part of this discussion we should have now on this motion, we should go through the five factors that we're required to consider in any application for variance. And I'll start the discussion on that. One of the first factors, is there an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, a detriment to nearby properties? Well, I would think that something that could explode is a very big negative detriment to the nearby properties and to the safety and welfare of the people therein. Can the benefit be achieved without a variance? Well, I mean, if they, in my opinion, if they admit to having looked at a hundred forty, what, forty-five other properties, it's hard to believe that this is the only one that can satisfy their needs. And they're only renting, they're not buying, so they can rent somewhere else. So I would say this can be achieved without this particular variance. Is the variance, the third factor is the variance substantial? Well, you're going from five percent to forty-nine percent. That's, that sounds substantial. Is there an adverse impact? Well, if something can explode in your backyard, that's an adverse impact. And it certainly, as a member Lukens has said, it'll certainly depress property values, because who's the one to live next to something that can explode? Is it self-created, which is, well, if you have forty-five other locations, you didn't have to rent this one. And though it's that, it's not determinative in and of itself, but there's certainly an argument to be made that it is self-created, could you pick this one? And you seem to have picked this one not out of overall benefit to the community, but to overall benefit to Orange and Rockland. This seems to be, as was said at the last meeting, cost benefit analysis, you get the best bang for your buck on this property and without concern the health and welfare of the neighborhood. And of course, as we mentioned last time, an overall consideration among for all the five factors is to, how, what type of detriment will this have, this variance have, if it were granted, to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood in general? These are five factors, and this, which flesh out the overall consideration of health, safety, and welfare. I would say that, it doesn't say purely economic benefit, by the way, health, safety, and welfare. I would say that this application fails miserably in, in, in the health, benefit, and safety of the neighborhood. I would support Mr. Cabell's motion to deny the application here. Anyone else have something to say?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, I agree with all of your points with respect to how we judge offering or not offering variances to applicants. And I think the first and foremost, number one and through number ten, which is the same thing in my mind, is that the greatest charge by the people, meaning we're a self-governing body, as with it is in the rest of the United States, that the charge by the people to their elected government, and we as, as extensions, as appointed parties, that the greatest charge that we give to our government is the highest consideration for the health and safety of the, of the residents of the public. If this was not located at such a location, you know, thoughts may be different. But this greatest charge is given to us, this zoning board of appeals here, as to this request for this variance to allow this to proceed to the planning stages. I'm in agreement with all of the points that, that you touched upon, Mr. Chairman, that we consider as a zoning board of appeals is charged by New York State law with respect to how we consider applications.
Thank you, Mr. Cabell. Does anyone else have anything to say on the motion to deny the application? Anyone else from the zoning board?
Any?
Hello? I'm sorry, does someone say something?
Um, I don't, I don't see anything.
Okay, then let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is there an opportunity for the applicant to provide a rebuttal to these statements that were made?
You already had your opportunity to present whatever you wanted to present. This is now a discussion amongst the zoning board members. And I, I, you're out of order to talk now.
Oh, that's why I asked, okay.
All right, I mean, you've had the first session, and now you had the second session. You certainly had adequate opportunity to say what you had to say and submit what you wanted to submit. Okay, I'm calling the roll call now on the motion to deny the application.
Suzanne, call the roll. Okay, Robin Lukens?
I, what was, what was the wording of the motion is that I know which, which, what I'm saying.
Whether to.
To reject it, to reject, is that, okay, yes, I, I vote to reject it.
You're in favor of the motion?
You agree to reject the motion, is what you're saying? Correct.
Okay.
Can, and you, do you agree with the reasons, or do you have your?
Yeah, I think that, that he voiced them very well. I do.
Okay, for all reasons previously stated. Okay, Richard Berger?
I vote to reject the application based on the evidence that's been presented and the health and safety to the community and the size of the lot. It just does not appear to be a good choice of a property for this application.
Okay. Marty Cabell?
Mr. Chairman, I, well, first I vote, what is it, yes, to decline the application. To interest of time, I will accede to your comments with respect to the five considerations for the village zoning code. And again, I'll repeat what I just said. We should all live to be a hundred and twenty. There should never be any accidents. It takes one, and my consideration is that this was in the wood somewhere away from our neighbors. You know, I would be looking at this in a totally different light with respect to, you know, energy planning by Consolidated Edison and its subsidiary Orange and Rockland. I can't get away from the fact that this charge that we have is enormous. And, and that's the health and safety of our residents. Again, something could never happen, but I'm not a soothsayer, so I vote no. I vote yes to decline.
Yes, to deny, okay.
Jacob Savinovich?
I vote to decline the application or respect whatever determines how the five facts regarding the application, considering the neighbors.
Okay. And Chair, Chairman Katz?
I vote to deny the application for the reasons I set forth before.
Okay, so motion is denied, five to zero. for the application. It is not approved.
Okay, that concludes this particular case. We want to take the two-minute break for someone to smoke a cigarette or something, or?
I, yeah, I'm gonna text Dan to get on. Scott, you're now, you can leave and.
I'm free.
You're free?
Mr. Chairman, a two-minute break would be most appreciated.
Okay.
I want to also take some to me to, to thank Judge Ugel, Udel for his participation in helping us through this case.
My pleasure. It's been my great pleasure to do the right thing and protect the citizens of Airmont at every opportunity. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, and we also want to thank the applicant for, for his concern for our village, but unfortunately, we don't see things the way they do. Okay, all right, two-minute break.
We see reality, that's why. That's the truth. Okay, thank you.
Scott Meyer, you're still on, correct? Like, there's so many people in here, I'm trying to see. Let me text him next. He's not answering me. Robin, you're gonna stay on, right?
I'm what?
You're gonna stay on for the review meeting?
Yep.
Okay, Jacob, I think he can, if he can't stay on, because he was helping us out, I'm trying to text him back.
I'm here, Suzanne.
Oh, oh, there you are. I was just texting you. I'm sorry, I was on the phone with Scott. You're welcome to stay, but we do have five members.
Then I'll leave.
Okay, thank you so much for staying for the first one.
Take care, thank you.
You too. Have a good evening. I'm just gonna remind Dan to get on. Just waiting for a few people to come back. You know, I'm gonna step out. All right, I'm back. Okay, Dan's on, um, is Arthur back? Oh, yeah, he's getting back on. Sorry to keep you waiting, Dan, I ran to the ladies' room.
No problem.
Think it's gonna be a long night. I'll take the opportunity. I'm on my meeting.
All right, are we all back and ready to proceed?
Yes, we are. Do you want me to read the next one, Arthur?
You can read that, but what is Dan online here?
Dan is on, yes, he is. And Mr. Savinovich said goodnight for the evening, and we have Scott Meyer back on. But you just want to continue to appoint Robin for the rest of the evening, then?
Okay, Robin's a good person.
As a voting member.
A full voting member for the rest of the evening.
Okay. All right, um, our next, excuse me, application is the continued public hearing on the application of Suez Water New York, Tom Inwell, number 26, to permit construction, maintenance, and use of a new 1,012.50 square foot treatment building to house the proposed treatment requiring a variance from requirements of Article 6, Section 21042 of Airmont zoning code for separation distance between two buildings. The bulk the required bulk dimension is 15 feet, and the proposed bulk requirements are 4.63 feet, 8.23 feet, and 8.38 feet. The property is located on the east side of Debonne Avenue, approximately 476 feet east of Debonne Ave. The lot is designated as Section 5512.12, Block 1, Lot 52 on the Town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District and is comprised of .772 acres. The street address is 239 Route 59, Suffolk, New York.
Thank you very much, Dan. Is there anyone here from the applicant who wants to speak up ahead of the applicant?
I believe.
Yes, sir.
Oh, there you are, Mr. Kirkpatrick. How are you?
Very well, thank you, thank you. I'm John Kirkpatrick. I'm both an attorney and a city planner. I've been practicing environmental and land just law throughout the Lower Hudson Valley for about 40 years now. I'm here representing Suez Water Public Utility. We are asking for a variance for the minimum required distance between two buildings. This is a very small, landlocked, isolated, and very tight site. The address is Route 59, but it's actually pretty far removed from the highway. It's a freestanding site. It is also, by the way, an existing facility. This is a water supply facility, and we're looking to add more treatment in another building. The reason we need this relief, as will be explained much more fully, is that, again, it's very tight site. We're trying to avoid negative impact to surrounding wetlands and to minimize the amount of fill required. So with me here tonight, Maria Stepanova from Suez Water, Erin Abline is from Suburban Engineer. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Erin, our engineer. She explained this very quickly last time we met. I'm gonna ask her to do the same again. Erin?
Sure, thank you. I'm gonna share screen now.
One sec, are you appearing as a witness, Mr.? What is your name again?
Abline.
Abline, are you appearing as a witness?
I am.
Okay, then do you affirm that the information you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, proceed.
Thank you. All right, can everyone see my shared screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So Suez Water New York occupies the subject site at 239 Route 59 for the purpose of operating a public drinking water facility. This drinking water facility includes a single groundwater well, as well as treatment facilities. This is just one of many Suez facilities as part of their water distribution network for the region. This facility is referred to as Well Number 26, and it is a critical production facility which operates year-round. So Suez undertook recent water quality sampling that specifically targeted immersion contaminants. These are known as PFAS. This was mandated by the New York State Department of Health. The results from Well Number 26 reveal detectable levels of these compounds above the recently adopted drinking water standards. So following these exceedances, and in compliance with the New York State Department of Health requirements to provide safe and reliable drinking water to their customer base, Suez is proposing the installation of a new treatment process. This new treatment process will utilize granular activated carbon filtration for the PFAS removal. The proposed installation of the additional treatment process specifically is targeted to remove these compounds, and again, is required by the New York State Department of Health, and it's required to be implemented, so in use by August of 2022, so August of next year. As you see here, and as previously stated, the property is landlocked. It's shown in red. It is behind the Ramapo Town Hall and Police Department. The property is accessed via a access easement through Lot 54, so through the town's property from South Debonne Avenue. It's right here. The property is located within the Neighborhood Shopping Zone District for which a public utility building is permitted. I'm gonna go to the existing condition sheet. As indicated on this sheet, the existing site contains two structures, here and here, that exist on the property. The first structure contains the well, chemical storage, and well piping, while the second structure contains treatment facilities that the water will pass through prior to being discharged into the distribution system. Again, these existing structures are critical, necessary, and are proposed to remain. Further, they have to remain active during construction of the proposed project. So beyond the buildings that I indicated, there is an existing access drive, which I pointed out, that comes through the town's property. It's highlighted here, there's an area that's cross-hatched. I know this was confusing last time. That area is just to be repaved. And then there's an area here that will remain. Okay, so the proposed parking space I'm gonna show you is on this existing pavement. So beyond this access drive, the site is surrounded by a six-foot-high fence. And beyond that, you'll see that there's mostly environmental constraints. There's wetlands on all sides. And then there is an unnamed tributary to the Montebello Creek over here. Further, the existing site is even more constrained because it contains high-voltage overhead wires that are under the ownership of Orange and Rockland through a substantial easement that exists on the site. So those overhead wires, you could see here, there's a series of them, and they cross through the site. So the point of me showing you this is, it is a very restricted site. We don't have much room to expand. I'm gonna go to the site plan, which shows the proposed layout. So to provide the necessary PFAS treatment, a duplex GAC filtration system, so that's granular activated carbon, we call that GAC, will be used. The GAC filtration vessels will be installed inside a new building that's adjacent to the existing structures. As described before, we have quite a few restrictions on site, so we really had a shoehorn in there, if you would. The proposed building is 1,013 square feet, and it's anticipated to be constructed out of split face block. The building will be 30 feet tall. And it's in this location here. You could see for the most part, it's rectangular, and then it has a small addition here. Again, just using the existing disturbed area of the site to the greatest extent possible, and also abiding by the restrictions we have surrounding the site. So these project improvements are centrally located to minimize the environmental disturbance. The total limit of disturbance of the project is .10 acres. The proposed project has no impact on the operations of the site. The number of employees that regularly access the site will remain. It's one employee, visits the site daily, performs maintenance, and they'll check residual levels of the facility. As stated, the proposed project requires a single variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 210-42. And that's for the distance between principal buildings. So we look at all three of these structures as principal buildings. The required distance is 15 feet, and the proposed distance is offered, and I'm going to show you where they are, are 4.63 feet, 8.23 feet, so you could see the existing two buildings are closer than the 15 feet that's required, and then we have 8.38 feet. The required distance, like I said, is 15 feet. So the relief is being requested to avoid any negative impact to the surrounding wetlands and to minimize the amount of fill required due to the tributary and the floodplain. The proposed use of the site will not change from the existing use. So in conclusion, the water system improvements I just ran through for Well 26 are required to meet the necessary New York State Department of Health requirements. And this will provide safe and reliable drinking water to the Suez Water New York customer base. Through investigations of the site and the surrounding area, the location of the proposed building is situated to allow for proper connection to the existing well treatment building, as well as to minimize the zoning and environmental impacts of the site.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
So if I might quickly go through the standards for an area variance, as you know, it's about.
Before you do that, may I ask, how tall are the other two existing buildings that exist here now?
Sure, it's a good question. So the existing buildings, as I have indicated here, they're about 16 feet each, but this building, so the treatment building, has what's known as an airstripper in it that is a similar height to the proposed building.
What exactly is an airstripper?
It's another form of treatment that exists on the site now.
Is it a building? Is it a structure? What is it?
It's a, it's a treatment vessel, if you would. But it's part of the building. I have a perspective that could, I'm sure would help if you'd like me to share that.
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is not something I think that was submitted, so I'm not sure if we need to note this at all, Suzanne, and I will send this to you after. But you could see here in this aerial, this is the existing wellhouse building, this is the existing treatment building. This is the existing treatment building. This is the airstripper portion I mentioned, which is the same height as the proposed building.
It's like a chimney.
Correct, it's a, yeah, a larger diameter chimney is what it would appear to be. It's mechanical in nature. You could also see from here, it's a very well buffered from the surrounding area.
Are there, is it here? I, I understand there are wetlands and whatnot. Uh, are there some residential areas around this?
Yeah, so if I go back to the cover sheet, I think is the easiest place to show that. So there is a residential zone, the residence, the nearest resident is up in this area off South Devon. So substantially, um, far away, there's no visual profile of the site that exists today.
How far away? How many feet practically?
So this is a five hundred foot. This ring here, five hundred feet. So I think if we use, you know, this residential structure here is probably the closest, so I think five hundred feet is the safe bet.
I see, uh, uh, okay, uh, and, uh, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Actually, one thing, you can't see this from the residential area, can't see, uh, what you built. Uh, uh, the, the two and now third building, you can't see that from the residential area, is that correct?
Yeah, it's very well, um, buffered with existing vegetation surrounding the whole area.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mister Chairman, uh, the applicant's attorney, uh, was, uh, was, uh, starting to speak about the showing that, uh, they need to make in order to be entitled to, uh, variance requested.
Okay, please, you know, and welcome on board, uh, sir, and, uh, we missed you. Uh, and now with the applicant's attorney, please, uh, continue.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, so, so again, uh, under the state law, essentially, it's a, it's a balancing act. Uh, you consider the benefit to the applicant if you give us the variance versus the potential detriment to health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community from granting the variance. Uh, this is a funny kind of a situation. It's a public utility. Uh, so, uh, Suez might not exactly agree that there's a benefit to them, but nevertheless, uh, this is something that they, that they have to do. Uh, and there is no detriment to health, safety and welfare. It is arguably a benefit to health, safety and welfare because this is something State Health Department is requiring additional filtration of the water. So the, the first specific standard is whether it's going to be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. And really, there is no, there's almost no change at all and certainly no undesirable change. Essentially, this is, there is no change. Then can we achieve this benefit by some other method feasible to pursue other than an area variance? And the issue we have is that if we move the building further back, now we are, uh, required to add additional fill and we're into the wetlands. And this is, again, more of a detriment, uh, to the area than the small variance. Then is the question of whether the variance is substantial. And really, the variance is as small as it, as, as it possibly can be in order to achieve the increased protection of public health that the State Health Department is asking for Suez Water to undertake. And again, as Erin Ablon pointed out, this is a very limited site. Uh, the fourth one is, uh, would it have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? It really is, it's, it's kind of the same concept as before. There is no adverse impact. Um, there's almost no change at all. And then, lastly, is this difficulty self-created? Uh, well, no, uh, this is on order from the State Health Department, Suez has to do it. Uh, and is this the minimum variance? Yes, because of the, because of the wetlands, because we don't want to add more fill because the building needs to be interconnected with the other buildings there. This is really the minimum. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, you have a, sir, do you have anything more you want to say to, uh, to the board? Or quality witnesses?
We had, we had our best witness of all, Erin Ablon.
Yes, uh, okay, so I take it you're completed your presentation.
Yes, thank you very much. We're happy to answer questions.
Yes, uh, does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant? Hope I'm good on. Well, sorry, no questions. Uh, all right, we're going to have a motion to open the hearing to the public. Marty, I make a motion, we open up the public hearing. A second?
I second the motion.
Okay, uh, motion?
All in favor? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one, okay, passes unanimously. Does anyone in the public, uh, have any questions to ask, uh, on this application?
If you have any comments, please raise your hand and state your name and address. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, um, we have a motion to close the public hearing. I make a motion, we close up, Marty, it's about here. Okay, a second? Anyone seconding this motion?
Second motion. Mister Chairman, Marty Cavell, I second it.
Uh, okay, um, any discussion amongst the board members on the application?
Come, uh, Suzanne, can you refresh my recollection?
Yes.
Um, as to how, uh, we handled seeker when they were for
I'm about to ask that, yeah, okay.
I want to say, I think this was unlisted?
Type two.
Type two.
Type two.
Uh, has that been done already or is that a proposed type two?
No, it's, it, it's a, um,
Doesn't require any further review?
Correct. Done, don't have, no motion, nothing is in order other than declaring it a type-two action.
Okay, so we declare this a type-two action. Uh, and then no members, any members of the board have any, uh, questions or comments? Uh, nobody. Okay, so let's entertain, not every hearing has to take forever, you know?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, yes, please do.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the application of Suez Water New York Incorporated for Tormann Well Number twenty-six for the following requested variances, uh, from the established zoning code where the bulk dimension requirement is fifteen feet between buildings. So they are requesting, uh, three variances here due to the, uh, positioning of the buildings. And if my math is correct, uh, a, um, variance of ten point three seven feet, a variance of six point seven seven feet and a variance of six point six two feet. Um, that's it. That's the motion, simply.
I'll second your motion. All right, uh, Mrs. Zumo, is his numbers right?
Yes.
Doesn't my calculator app work as well as anybody else's?
Yes, it does. Your calculator
Yeah, but Thank you very much, Mister Building Inspector. I appreciate
No problem. Okay, so, um, you have a motion, we have a second on the motion. Um, any other comments on the motion? All right, let's call the roll.
Um, member Meyer?
Okay, I vote to approve this, uh, variance, uh, due to, um, Suez Water New York Incorporated, uh, required by the State Health Department to do this. The property is isolated and I have no problem with this variance whatsoever. I approve.
Okay. Member Lukens? You're, you're muted, Robin. I'm trying to find you.
There, okay. I also approve it. I feel that it's not going to really impact anything or anybody other than giving us the benefit of what we need to comply with the state.
Okay, that's yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, um, member Cavell?
I vote, uh, to approve the application. Uh, there is no change whatsoever in my mind to, uh, the character of the area. The location, the general location doesn't change. It's ensconced in a, uh, in an area that, uh, is not changing and it's not visible, it's not near residential properties, um. And, uh, the request is, uh, really not substantial in my opinion. And the impact, uh, to the area is, I don't see any impact. I vote to approve the application of Suez Water New York Incorporated.
Okay, um, the, uh, member Berger. Richard
I vote to approve the application. I had no issues with any of the, uh, the, the subject matter. It seems to be that it'll just be a benefit to the community, safe drinking water.
Okay, Chairman Katz?
Uh, I also vote in favor of granting the variance, um, for the reasons stated, I think it'll be a benefit to the community. Uh, it will not have a, uh, negative impact on the community. Uh, and, uh, will also benefit from it. Uh, so therefore I vote yes in favor of the, uh, variance.
Five to zero, motion carries variance granted.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, you have to return to the planning board.
Yeah. They're, they already were continued to the twenty-second of last meeting.
Thank you all, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, I just want to make sure Kevin Conway, oh, he's on, we're just going to text him. Let's, um, next application is the continued public hearing on the application of owner Israel Weisenfeld for variance from Article Five, Section two ten dash fifteen, Table two R dash forty of Airmont zoning code for developmental coverage with a required bulk dimension of twenty percent and a proposed bulk dimension of thirty-seven percent for a single-family residence to build a spa house accessory structure. The property is located on the west side of Church Road, approximately three hundred and ninety feet north of Smith Hill Road. The lot is designated Section sixty-one point oh seven, Block two and Lot seventeen on the town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the R forty zoning district and is comprised of one point three six acres. The street address is forty-two Church Road, Airmont, New York, one oh nine five two.
Hey, thank you, Suzanne. Uh, just one technical point that always bothers me.
Yes.
Uh, when we say it's required twenty percent and they're providing thirty-seven percent, that doesn't mean they're providing more than what's required. Uh, it means they're limited to twenty percent. Uh, and, uh, they want to go above that to thirty-seven percent.
Right.
Okay, um, is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, Kevin Conway.
Mister Conway.
Yes, uh, Mister Chairman and members of the board, good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
And before I go into my prepared remarks, I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out. I told, uh, I was doing a closing with Lori this week, so I told her I would tell everyone that I saw her this week and that, uh, we miss her at the meetings, so.
Lori is no longer on the board, you know that.
No, I know. No, I just, I just wanted to, uh,
He's making a statement.
Making a statement, yes.
Okay.
I told her I I, I told her I would esp- especially let Marty know since, uh, I had run into her this week, so.
Uh-oh. Yolty association, all right, thank you.
Um, as, as for this application, uh, it's by the applicant owner, Mister Weisenfeld, who already owns this existing single-family residence in the R forty zone. Um, as Suzanne had indicated, it's comprised of one point three six acres. It's an existing condition for an existing parcel that's fully compliant with all the aspects of the zoning bulk table. Um, however, the client seeks to build a spa house as accessory structure on the site. The site itself, it's, um, as we indicated, is one point three six acres. It's a sixty thousand square foot lot, uh, where the requirements generally are forty thousand square foot. So it exceeds, it's a large lot, it's a flag lot, um. The detached spa structure has a total square proposed footage of sixteen hundred and two square feet with the first floor of nine hundred and fourteen square feet and a second floor of six hundred and eighty-eight square feet. The inside the structure would be located, a small pool and also a small hot tub. The, um, but for the requested, um, that's just the size of the, um, spa house. Fires the two variances sought for the far developmental coverage, but otherwise it's a fully compliant, uh, parcel. The, um, the applicant seeks, seeks to build the structure for the use and enjoyment of his immediate family. And the parcel can otherwise accommodate the size of the proposed spa house and because it's entirely indoors.
Hold on, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
It sounded like you mentioned two variances.
Uh, I think we just, I'm sorry, we, we just have listed one, I believe, which is for the
I thought you just said far and developmental coverage.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm misspeaking, just the development coverage.
Okay, just want to make the record clear.
No, no, it's, because we're at thirty-seven, we're at thirty-seven, we're at thirty-seven percent as proposed to twenty percent.
Right, that's developmental coverage.
Yes, sorry. And
One second, you mean you're only allowed twenty percent, did you want to go up to, uh, thirty-seven, not the other way around?
Chairman, that's correct. And if you look at the, um, Civil Tech had prepared the site, it does work on the site with the, as it's shown where the proposed spa house would be located. It's, uh, immediately behind the existing single-family residence. Uh, it's a flag lot as indicated, there's a basketball court that's also listed on the site. Uh, so it is meant for the immediate use and enjoyment of the client's, uh, family. It's indoors, so there should be no, normally if anyone's going to put a pool or something, uh, as an accessory structure outside, usually the neighbors will object because of, most times a pool will be located as close to the neighbor's property as possible. But here, since it's contained within the building, there should be no, uh, detrimental noise or other effect to the immediate neighbors. So we believe that it's a, um, that this makes sense for what the client wants to do. The site's more than large enough to accommodate it. We did also provide, I believe the, uh, board should have the, uh, A B design had defined at the sketches of the both the elevation of the proposed structure and the interior dimensions. I'd asked them to include that, so I believe the board has that information. Uh, but otherwise, of course, I wanted to gauge the board's reaction to the application and whether there's any comments, positive or negative, or suggestions, positive or negative.
Before we proceed. I have a question, uh, how much smaller could you make this, uh, second building so you don't need any variances?
Uh, oh, I believe just, I believe even if it was just the, uh, if it wasn't two floors, just the one floor, it would still require a, uh, the variance as accessory structure. So I don't believe that, um,
Well, you're not asking for a variance for accessory, you're talking about
No, but I'm, I'm saying, but with the increased, um, floor space, I believe that's what is, drives the, uh, the train for the requested variance. So whether it was just the one floor or the two floor, I don't believe that the combined square footage of the, uh, the total of sixteen hundred square feet, even if it was a nine hundred and fourteen square feet, it was just the first floor portion, I believe we'd still, uh, be required to seek a variance.
Variance for what?
Because of the, again, because of the, um, developmental coverage. Because of the additional
How, how much smaller could you make this building so that you have no development coverage issues?
I believe it's based upon the building inspector's interpretation, even if we just had a square, uh, the second floor, which is six eighty-eight or the first floor, which is nine fourteen. In either case, um, we would require it, and this goes back to what we had talked about from some of the other applications we've had because of the flag lot, because of the driveway. Uh, we've had this issue before with the building inspector because of the, um, that portion of the driveway of the flag lot doesn't get incorporated in to the calculation. So I believe anything that we would put as an accessory structure, uh, would require a variance.
Mister Zuma, you agree with that? Mr. Zuma, you agree with that?
No.
Well, how much could they get, uh, built and that require a variance?
I can't do the reverse calculations right, right now, based on that. I, you would have to, the problem was that this was originally submitted as both buildings on one lot. And the building ended up having a, um, first off to start, that's not a pool in the basement, it's a MIGFA. So that's one issue. Secondary to that, the original drawing had a second floor with um, two bedrooms, a kitchen and some other things in there. So I denied that originally because you can't have two structures on the same lot. So they reduced, uh, they removed the building and enlarged the size of the house. And then ended up asking for the additional building back after they got approval for the house. So the house was a little bit smaller in the first iteration. I can't do the calculations in my head. I'd have to look at the drawings and try and figure out how much smaller they can make it. But whether it's one floor or two floors, developmental, developmental coverage is based on the size of the building, where not the number of floors. So you're not thinking of FAR, you're thinking of developmental coverage.
You're saying, but it's possible to shrink this, uh, thing.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's possible to, to shrink it small enough that they won't need a variance because you're talking about seventeen percent. That's a lot.
But they certainly could, uh, have a smaller variance, uh, than the requested.
That is true, but I don't know how much smaller you can get and still have the amenities that they want in the building. And the development.
And I'd have to, and I'd have to look at the, uh, to have Civil Tech do the, as well as for the architectural to see, you know, to run the numbers to see what, where the, where the cutoff would begin or end. Because I have those responses, we sit here now either. Sorry.
Okay, the developmental coverage also includes the basketball court.
I take it it's pa- it's paid to something.
Well, it's, good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Got a few little questions if I may.
Yeah, just, I mean, it was Conway, you completed your presentation? Or?
Yeah.
Okay, then, Mr. Cabell.
Uh, just a couple accessory questions. Um, will the, uh, spa building be connected to the main house? I, we talked about it maybe in the last, uh, go around. I, I don't recall. Yes or no?
I don't believe it's connected, no. Um, it's an access, it's an accessory structure and I wasn't present on the last go around, so I can't speak to what might have been discussed.
All right, well, the, uh.
But the, but the building inspector's treating it as though it was with regard to the square footage. So it, it's not connected, but I know that in his interpretation, uh, he's adding the square footage on as if it were in the main house.
All right, and this, uh, proposed spa with that, i- is, is this absolutely totally for, uh, private use?
Yes, yeah. And we, and we would, and we would live with that condition if that's what the, board wished in order to have the application granted. It's not meant as a, uh, as a neighborhood pool or if, uh, if indeed it's a MIGFA in the, in the, uh, first floor, you know, that, again, that doesn't, in and of itself, does not mean that, uh, the board should be concerned with, because it's a MIGFA versus a pool, that, um, it's a different type of use or that, um, I, I, I don't agree with the, the building inspector's interpretation that somehow it should be treated differently. But notwithstanding, the, the client has indicated this is strictly for his immediate family. It's not a, it's not a neighborhood pool. It's not, it wouldn't be a neighborhood MIGFA.
Mr. Conway, uh, I believe the building inspector pointed out in his letter of disapproval that you've got a public opening, a public doorway to this, uh, facility. Um, are you willing to give that up?
It's not an open public doorway. And then again, I, I think that gets into, a- and I don't like to go down the garden path with, the building inspector with, he's interpreting because there's a doorway. It's, it's a, it's not a connected structure. So yes, there'd be a doorway to the, the accessory structure. Uh, but that alone should not have any negative connotation or some sort of connotation that, um, it's now going to be, uh, something meant for the public at large as opposed to the, as opposed to the, uh, to the client himself. I, I, I don't, I don't agree with that at all.
Uh, Lou, um, you, what do you have to say about that private doorway? He says it doesn't, uh, it's a separate building. It doesn't need, it has to have an entrance.
In most cases, when we, when we're looking at a private MIGFA versus a public MIGFA, the MIGFA is attached to the dwelling and accessible only by the residents of the house. In this case, it's encased in a separate building out in the back part of the lot. So I'm not saying it's not going to be used for private use. I, you know, I can't really, I, I can't really confirm or deny that, but it's technically an outbuilding in the middle of the yard and it's accessible by the public.
It would be accessible by the public on some private property that, that I, I don't disagree, I don't agree with that interpretation whatsoever. That's ten, that's ten more paces down the garden path. I mean, it's, you're, you're counting the square footage as though it's connected to the building, so you can't have it both ways.
No, I'm counting the square footage as if it's square footage. It's habitable.
I know, but you're, but you're treating it, you're adding it to the existing structure, so you're treating it in that fashion that you're adding on to it, so you're treating it as one structure. It's permitted to be an accessory structure, but it does not in itself, just like the basketball courts there, are we to interpret that I have a hoop in my yard? Does that mean it's open to the public? No. Uh, it, it's the same difference. So I, I don't agree with that line of thinking. I understand your concerns, but I don't agree with that line of thinking. And we would live with that as a condition. That it's not up to the general, because it's not.
What, what are you living with? What, what was that?
Now, I said if that, to, to, to show it, it's not open to the general public. That's not what, that's not what it's meant to be, just as though the basketball court isn't either. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't ascribe to the mindset that therefore it must be open to the public, just like the same thing with the basketball court. If I had a ta- if there was a tennis court there, it wouldn't be open to the public. I mean, it's, it's just, I don't ascribe to that mentality whatsoever. We all live in different neighborhoods with different accessory structures, and it doesn't mean that it's open to the public. So, and I don't think the board wants to take that interpretation. And I would caution against that because I think that just goes down a very dark path.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Cabell.
I just wanted to, uh, stay to, uh, Mr. Conway, uh, a- and to, you know, the public and the board. It was just a question. And I think it was a reasonable and rational question to ask, and there's no path, uh, to a garden that, um, was my intention whatsoever. It's a reasonable question for a zoning board, uh, member and building inspector to, uh, to get involved with. That's all. And, uh, one quick question, Mr. Conway, what, uh, I don't have a plan in front of me, uh, the size of the pool. I have the, uh, square footage of the building, first and second floor. What would be the size of the pool? Do you have those dimensions?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at to see. I don't know if it's listed on my, on the, uh, design plans I have. I have first and second floor design plans, but I don't know if it has the size of the dimensions.
Well, obviously it would be on the first floor and the first floor, uh, square footage was, which, which figure was it again? The six eighty?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or the nine fourteen probably.
Nine fourteen was on the first floor and six eighty eight the second floor.
Nine fourteen six, okay, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, uh, Dan, uh, I yield to.
Um, I mean, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the question?
Yes.
Um, if I'm confused, I can't imagine the public's not confused. Um, at various times I've heard there is an existing MIGFA at the residence or in the residence. And at the same time, I've heard that this new proposed structure was going to be a pool. Uh, but then I also thought I heard that it too was going to be used as a MIGFA and that the issue um, was, uh, whether it was going to be, uh, public or private. Um, am I missing something?
I don't believe there's a MIGFA in the existing house, and the information I have was not that this was a MIGFA in the accessory structure. That's what the building inspector determined it to be. So I can happily provide additional information at a further meeting to debunk or, you know, demystify the application. But the information I have is that, uh, it is not, it's, it's what the applicant listed on the application, which was to have a, um, a small pool as well as a, um, a hot tub.
We get the dimensions of that small pool? Or can you come back with those dimensions?
Yes, I, I don't have a problem doing that. Because I don't see that. I'm looking at the floor plans now and I don't believe, and again, I don't have the, the blown up version, but I don't believe I have the dimensions for that. It looks like it may be shown, but I'm just, it's not.
Lou, can you decipher it from the size of that, uh, small pool?
This, I don't, I don't have the drawings with me, so I can't do that.
It's hard to ask, you know, it, it could be any size within nine hundred and fourteen square feet of that first floor, so obviously smaller than that, but exactly, we don't have that information at this time. Which Mr. Conway can, I guess, procure.
Yes.
I, I would like to see that information.
No, we can, we can show, and we can show the details. That's not an issue. Because the plans I have here are not in the, uh, large enough scale that I can give you the numbers.
Okay, uh.
But it does show within the rooms, it shows the layout on the first floor and the layout on the second floor.
Okay.
And it shows all that level of detail, which I have no problem providing to the board.
Mr. Zuma, why do you say that these, uh, buildings are attached when the applicant says they're not?
I didn't, I never said the buildings were attached. It's an accessory structure in the yard. But the square footage has to be combined for the two buildings. It's not like it's a separate square footage. It has to count for the FAR.
Okay, but you mentioned that the, um, it has its own entrance way, which it has to have, that it's a separate building.
Correct. Not, like I said, normally when you have a private MIGFA, it's in the dwelling. It's not out in a building in the yard.
Oh, you're saying.
There are several private MIGFAS in Armont, which I have permitted and installed. Most of them are inside the house. They are in the dwelling of which the resident lives. It is not in a building at the far corner of the yard, not accessible to the resident. He's got, he's got to walk across his yard to get to it.
So this one, this one, the two structures are actually very close, so even if it, even if it were to be a MIGFA in the spa house, there's no prohibition against that.
No, I never.
The structures, I, I know, I'm just pointing that out, and the structures are very close to one another. So this is not where he has to traipse across his entire yard to get to a spa house.
So I'm gonna follow in that. So is this a MIGFA or not a MIGFA? What is this?
As I indicated before, the applicant advised that it's a, there's a small jacuzzi and a small, a small hot tub and a small pool. If the, if there's any difference, I'll advise the board prior to the next meeting, but that's the information that I have.
Okay.
And the fact that it's in a spa house, which is almost adjacent, close to the existing structure, it's not a far walk. It should not, it, it should not give anyone pause or concern, even if it were to be a MIGFA in the spa house. But I don't believe it is, because the information we have is that it isn't. But we'll, we'll provide all that additional information. I'll, we'll provide the plans and the details, and I'll, I'm happy to have the architect, uh, present to go through all the specifics.
Okay, uh, Lou, are there any other requirements? This were a MIGFA. I understand you're saying it isn't. But if it were, are there any other health requirements or?
No.
But no, it's, so just a question.
Technically, MIGFA is treated exactly as a pool. There's no, or health requirements for a MIGFA.
So why do we care if it's a pool or not, or a MIGFA or not?
I don't.
We don't. We're just asking a question.
I don't care what it's called. It's a body of water in the basement of a building.
Yeah, then the architects, the architectural plans listed as a spa pool, but we'll double check just to make sure.
But you were talking, Lou, you were saying something about a commercial MIGFA and a private MIGFA, but this isn't any of the, apparently, so why are we talking about commercial versus, this is confusing to me, I'm sorry. Why are we talking about?
Okay, well, I feel better now. About my point. It may have been prescient of me. It may not have been said before, but now, now it looks like it might be.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes.
Lou, so Lou, why are we talking about public versus private if it's neither?
Because the plans that I originally received listed it as a MIGFA. So I don't know what plans we're looking at now that say it's a spa pool.
I'm looking at the architectural plans from, from registered architect.
Lou, could you repeat what you just said, your last sentence there?
The original plans listed it as a MIGFA. Now it's, it's, it's listed as a spa pool.
You said it doesn't make a difference. It's a pool, whatever.
Technically, it doesn't make a difference to me at all. I couldn't care less.
If, 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 but if it's, a- again, I, I, I need to be educated, uh, if it is a MIGFA and if it's open to the public, are there any, uh, excuse me, are there any requirements, you know, from the municipality with respect to?
No.
No, okay, I just wanted to know. Thank you.
And I'm reading, I'm looking at the architectural plans signed by the licensed architect where he's listing it as a spa pool. And I'll provide, provide those details at the next meeting, so it's not a problem.
Okay.
All right, so, um, still that clearly what we're talking about. But, um.
Talking about developmental coverage in FAR.
Right, and that has nothing to do with a MIGFA, I mean, uh.
Doesn't have anything to do with anything that's in the buildings. Except for the floor space in the paved area.
Just has to do with developmental coverage.
That could, right, that could be any building, uh, and we don't care about public entrance or the private entrance then?
I don't care if you have to climb down through the chimney.
But, uh, all right, but in the third paragraph of your, uh, denial letter, uh, who is this, um? Yes, and dated August third, twenty twenty one. Um, you say the MIGFA in the basement of the spa is separate from the main house and has its own entrance.
Correct.
So, but.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, read that again?
This is from Mr. Zuma's, um, August third, twenty twenty one, uh, letter of denying, um, uh, the request here.
For?
What?
Request for? Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
Point number three, the MIGFA is in the basement of the spa house and is separate from the main house and has its own entrance. This would classify it as a commercial or public MIGFA and is not allowed in the zone. A set of stairs internally were added, but the exterior access remains. A MIGFA for private use by the owners of a single family house should be located in an area within the sole control of the occupants of the house.
Okay, but we're saying it's not a MIGFA. If it is a MIGFA, it doesn't make a difference. So, so it doesn't make it, is it a MIGFA that makes a difference or it's not a MIGFA?
It doesn't. It doesn't make a difference either way. We're, we're for developmental coverage in FAR.
So why is it in your letter?
It's in my letter because there's a difference between commercial MIGFAS and private MIGFAS. That's all I was stating, is that there's, there, there's a big designation between commercial and private MIGFAS.
Okay, but this is just a pool, so. Okay, I'm just trying to understand what, you know, what you're, what you're driving at here, Lou.
Um, I'm not driving anywhere.
I may interrupt. I, I don't think it's relevant whether it's a, a MIGFA or a pool. We're talking about whether it's public or private, and we're talking about land usage, so I don't even know why we keep rehashing what the use is. Uh, the inspector stated it didn't matter either way.
It's in the denial letter. We gotta deal with it.
The more important part of the denial letter is developmental coverage in the FAR.
Right, and if it was a pool and had a public entrance, that would be okay?
Well, the, I think the health department would have an issue with a public pool, but that's not my problem.
Okay, so I'm not sure why you put this in, Lou, but okay. Um, I don't want to beat a dead horse. Um, okay, so, um, Mr. Conway, you have anything more you want to add? We can open this up to the public. Mr. Conway, you have anything more you want to add, we can open this up to the public.
No, to, to the public, but I was gonna ask to have it adjourned and keep the public portion open. And we'll provide that additional information with the architectural plans and. To the board's satisfaction at the next meeting.
Okay, that's.
I have a question, are you requesting FAR or not? Cause it's not on the application.
No, we're requesting developmental coverage.
And nothing more, okay, I just wanted to be clear, thank you.
I, I, well, hold on. Don't stop there, Lou, is this the only variance, the one that's being applied for that they need?
As of the August third letter, the FAR was listed as well.
Mister, uh, Mister Chairman, I have a quick question for the building inspector. Uh, I noticed there was a, there's a building that was raised, uh, taken down.
Yes.
Was that a main house that was on the, on the property?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no structure on the property as we speak?
There is actually a foundation in now.
For?
The new house.
For a new house and a permit has been granted for that?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, now I'm clear as to what, you know, we're dealing with on this, on this lot, thank you. Dan, you were saying something?
Uh, I think it behooves everyone to figure out. Um, if. Only one variance is required, or if two variances are required. Um, I don't think you'd disagree with me, Mr. Conway, correct?
Uh, I'll try to unmute you again.
Yep, there goes, just repeat that last part, Dan, you, you cut out on my end.
Okay, um, I think, uh, it behooves everyone to find out. Whether only the one variance that you applied for is required, or if. An additional or other additional variances are required, one of which. Might be, uh, an FAR variance. In which case. This would have to be re-advertised.
And the application has to.
And the application would have to be amended.
Bended.
To reflect. But I'll leave it to you, Mister Chairman, but. People from the public who are on, um, for this application. Uh, may not be available whenever it's on again. And, um, I don't think it would, uh. Be, uh. Unwise to allow them to, um. Have their say.
Okay, so the pass forward here is, we will open up the public hearing. Uh, and allow any member of the public to say what they want to say. Uh, and then we're gonna adjourn, um, for Mr. Conway to come back with the information.
Uh, we're gonna, I, I think we're gonna have to adjourn to a date on, well. Okay, we could do this one of two ways. We can adjourn to a date certain. But it would only be for this variance. And in the event that another variance had to be applied for. That, um. Uh, or this, um. Public hearing that would have to be re-noticed. For the, um, additional variance and or variances. That might be required. Or in the alternative. Um, you can adjourn it without notice. Uh, or without a date certain, uh, and it would have to be re-advertized, and at the time that it was re-advertized. It could, uh, in the event that it needed one, more than one variance. Uh, that could then be advertised as such.
Okay, so that's interesting, uh.
Oh, do you want a motion, Mister Chairman, to, to open it to the public at this point?
Well, once, I don't know what we're doing yet.
Well, you wanted the public to hear, you know, to speak.
Yeah, we'll get to that, we'll get to that, first I have to understand what's going on. Um, at this point, I don't know, um, Dan, which would be the most efficient way to deal with this? Dan?
I, I, I think there's two analysis going on. Um, one is you got an application. Uh, that's been duly advertised, um, and, um. People are waiting to be heard. Um, on that application, on the other hand. Um, that application may change. Um, in which case, uh, it would have to be re-advertized, and then they would have. An opportunity to comment on, um, potentially a different application. Or at least different relief being sought by the applicant.
Okay, so I think what we should do, uh, is go forward with what we have in front of us now. And if it changes, we'll deal with the changes at that time. So, uh, so at this point, we're discussing one variance, and I need a motion to open the hearing to the public.
Mister Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay, second the motion. I'll second Scotty. Okay, uh, all in favor, I? I, I. Any against, any opposed? Okay, so public hearing is now open, is anyone in the public who wishes to say something about the. That's requested now.
Um, Suzanne Rodriguez.
Yes, hi, um, I have some concerns about runoff of water. And, um, what impact this will have on the sewers, cause our sewers are probably not up to. Um, today's standards, and has any consideration been made for the neighbors? Who, uh, I'm sorry, and I live at forty-three Church Road, um, who have wells in the area, I know not, most people now don't have wells, but. Um, we do, and I'd be very concerned about any kind of impact that would have on our well system.
Okay, Mr. Conway, you wanna deal with that question? Miss Conway?
You're mute, you're muted, Kevin.
I don't believe there's any impact with regard to that, because the, also, the town of Ramapo looked at it, and there was no other indication from. The water company or any of the other agencies that would indicate that that's an issue. So, this is not a.
But how?
Can I, can I speak? This is not a large pool, this is a small, um, it's a small. Hot tub and a small pool, so I don't believe it's a practical matter that there would be any impact.
And how's the filtration working on that?
It'll come with a unit that encompasses it, just like any other pool or hot tub, so this is no different.
It's enclosed, it's enclosed, it's an, it's an enclosed system, it doesn't constantly be filtering back out into the sewer.
I don't believe so.
Conway, do you find out for certain?
Sure.
Put that on your list of things to.
I am, I'm, I'm adding that to the list.
And Kevin, it's.
And this is public, this is Suez water, correct? They're gonna use pub, they're gonna use the public water, it's not gonna be fed by a well or the aquifer.
Not, not that I'm aware of, no. There's no indication of that.
Alright, you'll put that on that list too then.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Rodriguez, you have anything more you want to say?
Um, no, I, I, I do have the concerns too about whether it's public or private. And, um, traffic and impact to the neighborhood if it does become public. And that there are a lot of people going in and out of that driveway.
Okay, right now the representation is that it's private. Uh, if that changes, then the situation changes. Uh, okay, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, uh, anyone else?
Thank you.
The next person is Danielle Meehan.
Uh-huh, okay, Ms. Meehan?
Hello, Danielle Meehan, eighteen Ackerman Avenue, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yeah, you, uh, represent that the information you give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, thank you, proceed.
I, I think there's a lot of concern about the impervious, okay, I guess my question with the basketball court. Is that impervious coverage? Yes, Lou, lose.
Yes.
Okay, so there's already, um, pretty bad flooding issues in that area. Um, as well as, uh, Mr. Conway, you may not be aware of this, but there was a sewer spill very close to. This property, which, and which drained into the Saddle River, which is part of, um. Our drinking aquifer, drink, drinking water aquifer, so there is some concern about that. But, um, adding more impervious coverage is really gonna be a problem to the neighbors, they already, um, have problems with standing water. Um, so I, I really think that needs to be very seriously considered if this is an appropriate place for this kind of thing. Um, and, um.
Yeah, so what the planning board, uh, Dan, that kind of issue go to the planning board or to us?
This is a single family home, this doesn't go to the planning board.
Uh, so goes to us, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, next.
Next person is Suzanne Nadell Scaccio.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Miss Scassi, is the information you're about to give us true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, and, and, uh, your address.
Address, yes.
My address is thirteen Van Gogh Lane, and my property abuts forty-two church. As mentioned by previous people speaking, uh, there already is an existing problem with flooding. Every time it rains, I get a big lake in my backyard. Um, there is a very high water table here, and it runs across all of the neighbors' yards at the same level. So I do have a concern about the amount of, uh, impervious coverage to this property. One of the questions that I do have, obviously, is whether or not this MIF is going to be public or private. And I am concerned about the traffic coming through. Another concern that I have is I've spoken with the owner of this property, he's a lovely gentleman. And he did assure me that this was going to be a private use only. However, I guess my next question is, there is going to be a basketball court located. Which will be pretty close to my property line, and I'm wondering why there is going to be a driveway. Going into this basketball court. I have another neighbor on the other side of my house that has a basketball court, and they don't have a driveway going to it. So it leads me to believe that this particular basketball court can be utilized as a parking lot. And I'm not quite sure why, if this MIF is only gonna be for private use. They would need a quote-unquote parking lot for this particular property.
And Mr. Conway, would you like to deal with that?
You know, all I can tell you is that's not what, it's not meant as a parking lot, it's not, it's gonna be, it's listed as a basketball court, that's what it's there for. Like, I can't, can't deal with hysteria, I have a basketball court where the driveway leads into it, that's not unusual, it doesn't become a parking lot. So it, it's, you know, we can't deal with what, uh, everyone, what everyone thinks it may become, that's not what's going on here, and that's what you have. The code enforcement officer for, and the code enforcement officers in, uh, Village Armont are very, very strict. So. I deal with them all the time on behalf of clients, so I can tell you compared to other municipalities. But, you know, if you guys wanna deal with the reality or perceive what you think it's gonna be, that's not what we're here for.
Well, my.
So I can tell you.
My concern is that this.
I heard your concern, but I'm telling you, that's not what it's gonna be used for, so.
Then why is there?
You don't wanna believe, if you don't wanna believe the answer, I can't help you.
Well, okay, it remains to be seen, how are we going to address the problem of flooding? If they're covering over most of this property, almost doubling the amount that they're allowed to be covered. I already have a flooding problem in my yard, is this gonna exacerbate the problem?
No indication of a flooding problem right now, with regard. To regard to my client's property, to your client's property, so I don't, as to any flooding condition you have. You're automatically assuming that it's coming from my client's property, there's no indication of that whatsoever.
I didn't have a flooding problem until your client, sir, removed the trees. From the property and started paving over and started putting concrete down, so the water can't get absorbed by the land. I've been living in my house for twenty-two years, I did not have a flooding problem in my yard until this construction took place.
Well, there's an existing house that's already there, so we can't turn back the clock.
That is correct, however, the existing house was more forward, closer to Church Road, and there was drainage in the property. It was not an eleven thousand square foot house as to the, uh, blueprint that I received when I foiled the plans.
But the house is already existing, so we're past that.
You are incorrect, sir, the house that was there prior was not that size, it was closer to church.
Talk about the house that's there now.
The, the foundation and all of the concrete work is in. So a good portion of that property is now covered where it was not covered before. I did not have a flooding problem until very recently, until this construction started taking place. And I'm living here twenty-two years.
Okay, um, is there anything more you wanna add to that? Miss Scassi, oh, just basically what you have to say.
Well, I, I said, I'm concerned that the problem is gonna be, come even worse. Should this basketball court and this ancillary building be put in, because now. The ground will be able to absorb even less water, and where is it gonna go? Right into my yard. And I abut this property.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm gonna amend my prior advice. Why don't we, um, uh, allow, uh. The remaining people who wanna speak, like, three minutes to, um, speak. Under any scenario. Whether this be, uh, continued, um, to a date in time certain. Or whether it have to be, has to be re-advertized. In its present form, or. If it needs additional variances, uh, the public will, uh, still have an opportunity, uh, to speak.
So. I, can I say one more thing, or am I muted? No, you can. I don't appreciate Mister Conway saying my comment is hysterical. I am in no way, shape, or form hysterical, I'm sorry that you don't like my tone. I resent your comment, and I want.
I didn't say that, so you misheard, you misheard, I didn't say that, you said that.
I said hysterical, I beg your pardon, this is being recorded, okay? Give the tape back, you said I was hysterical.
Um, alright, we're getting a little farther afield here from.
I don't have any other hands raised at this time, Chairman Katz.
Oh, okay, so then we will leave. Okay, we'll leave the public hearing open. Uh, and we'll adjourn, uh, we'll have to decide whether we have to re-advertize or not.
Oh, you need a motion, uh, Mister Chairman, to continue the public hearing?
Yes, let me. We're not up to that yet, uh, just let us know what the path forward is going to be.
Alright, let's hear Suzanne first.
Okay, all I wanted to do was point out to the, um, applicant's attorney. That if there are additional variances, I need to send that out to the agencies, no GML is required on this. But then the agencies need to comment on those other variances, so. But then the agencies need to comment on those other variances, so I.
I I understand.
Okay.
All right, so at this point, though, we don't know if that's gonna happen. And we only have one variance in front of us. And if the situation changes, we will have to deal with a different modified situation if it comes to pass. Okay, so that's how we're going forward. And right now, we want to adjourn, leave the public hearing open and adjourn today's session. And now, Martin, you have a motion?
Hi, Mari.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing in the in this application.
Thank you, second.
For this application, I should say.
Thank you, second.
I second.
Okay, you got that. You got all that, Suzanne?
Yes.
Okay, all right. What?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay.
Any opposed? Not opposed. Okay.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. And Mister Conway, you'll be in touch with
Yes.
Miss Carly about how if anything changes.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so now we're adjourned. Next month's hearing is December ninth, is it?
No, it is Tuesday, December seventh at seven thirty. Remember, we moved it. I had conflict.
Right. Okay, December seventh, seven thirty Zoom meeting for whatever comes up by that.
I I already have two applications. One is a religious application and we'll go through it when you get it.
Okay, but you have two other applications, would I be?
I have I have two submissions.
The submission, one of which is that religious one.
And yes, and then another one is a single family residence. One is a school and one is a single family residence.
Right, and then the continuation of this one, one way or the other.
Right. Depending if I don't have to resend information out and I I I can't answer that.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor? And he knows, okay, motion carried unanimously. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, Suzanne.
Good night.
Bye.
And Lou, thank you.
Good night.